October 7, 2025, City Commission Work Session Agenda. I'm going to convene the meeting and ask for the roll call. And before we do the roll call, we will, we have our art, some of our art commissioners. Is anybody going to be online from the Arts Commission or everybody? It's not everybody's here. Nobody online from the Arts Commission? Okay, that's all right. Just want to make sure we didn't leave anybody out. So, go ahead.
Commissioner Adam Marl.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Scott Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
Mayor Denise McGriff.
Present. So let's start with the Arts Commission.
Commission member Leo Hugan is not here.
You mean Emma? Choir. She is not here.
She's on her way.
Commissioner Alwine.
Amanda.
Commissioner Sira. Commissioner Loy is not here. Commissioner Amy Wilson. Commissioner LaMester is not here. Commissioner Ravenwise.
I'm here.
And Chair Josh Planton.
Present.
All right. So we have on the commission agenda tonight. As you can see, we have a usually very full agenda. So we're going to take about an hour for the first part of the agenda and about an hour for the second part of the agenda. So we have four basic overview topics. And just for the Arts Commissioners' information is that this is a work session, so we do not make any decisions nor do we take votes on things. But we are able to have some great discussions. And a lot of times we will have some outcomes that we will ask staff to get back to us on and then see how long it takes for that. And then it gets forwarded on to a regular City Commission agenda. So you guys went to 625 Center Street? Yes, because I was worried about that because the agenda said. Yeah, make sure you come to the Public Safety Building. So why, since we already did roll call, why don't you go ahead? We called you, but we knew you were on your way Choir. So just introduce yourself. Oh, wait till, turn the green button on. There we go.
Hi, I'm Choir.
Hi, I'm Joyce.
Last names, please.
LaMasters.
We're here for the, we're on the record now. All right. So James, Mr. Graham, are you giving the brief overview? Yes.
I don't get the chance to sit beside the mirror often.
Oh, yeah, lucky me.
Oh, you're a pain boy.
That was not a cut. That was a compliment. That's why I said, lucky me.
Well, good evening, Arts Commission and City Commissioners. I'm James Graham, Economic Development Manager, Oregon City. And tonight, we have a, this is a joint session between the two groups. And there's a lot to discuss. While we may not get all of it, all of it is important. And so with that said, the fund of, the main point here is that this discussion is geared toward laying a foundation for the Arts Commission to proceed with its work. And helping the Arts Commission serve as a good advisory body to the City Commission. That's the goal. And so with that said, I will turn it over to the Chair, Josh Planton. With your permission made.
Well, before you do that, I'm assuming that everybody has reviewed the staff report that came out. Did you all receive that? So there are, again, a number of recommendations on here. I would actually, like it is on the staff report, I'd like to start with number one and talk about the letter of intent. And Commissioners, did you, my Commissioners, did you all see that and get that? Okay.
Yes.
All right, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so the first item that we wanted to bring forward to the City Commissioners was the letter of intent with the Willamette Corridor connecting communities through art, which was included in the packet provided. I'm actually going to pass it over to Amy Wilson, who was helping lead this initiative. And she can kind of give you a summary of the letter and answer any questions you have.
Yes, please.
There we go. So this is simply a letter of intent. There's no request, there's no budget, there's really nothing other than Lake Oswego, the Arts Commission of Lake Oswego and Westland have gotten together to try to get ahead of any kind of construction that might be happening with the Willamette Corridor along Highway 43. And that is generally because they have a percentage for the arts, which means that anytime there's public investment in something, then they're going to get some of that money. And so getting ahead of that and planning for what might happen is a great thing. And then they reached down to us and said, you know, we'd do like to be a part of this. And I thought it was great. I think it's wonderful. So all this is, is a letter of intent to show that we intend to collaborate with them. And then at some point, if something comes up that is specific, that has a request, we would bring that before the Commission. But it's just, it's the two points of, I want to let you know this is happening. And then to the extent that there is a blessing involved, getting your blessing.
Are there any, well, let's have a discussion. What are the other Arts Commissioners? What are your thoughts about it? So just speak up.
Hi, I'm Rebecca. I'm the Vice Chair. I actually would really like to see this happen. And the reason why is because part of our goals that we've been discussing is strengthening partnerships with other organizations in the area to help bring not only visitors, but visibility for Oregon City and the art collection that we hope to be involved in.
Anybody else?
I'll just add that based on the initial discussions that were had with the other Arts Commissioners, all the art commissions in Westland and Lake Oswego, you know, their intention is to maybe, is to look at that Highway 43 as a real art corridor, making it a almost tourist attraction that people can travel down and see lots of beautiful public art, maybe even have some specific art districts along that route. And us being at the very end of that gives us the opportunity of being a destination city in terms of that whole project. So getting in early and be able to hear what they have to say, get ideas, and then bring those back to you is, I think, a really great strategic opportunity for us. So I'll leave it at that.
So one of the things that I was, when I was, I read this and I spoke at their, at the Arts Commission meeting, was that I was glad to see that the Clackamas County Arts Alliance was included. And I don't know if the county has any sorts of arts group, which I suspect that they do not. But, because the letter here was written to council members and Board of County Commissioners, and it's okay, they, most people don't realize we're the only commission left in the entire state. Wortland was the other one, but we are now the only other one that's called a commission. So it just seems to me that they should, they should be, that they should be involved. It says they're under stakeholder engagement. But they are also doing a lot to try to, you know, to bring things together, although we haven't had them come to any of your meetings and talk, you know, do some cross-pollination. But I think, I generally think it's a good idea and that, that I would, I would recommend just in comments that our City Commission, we should support this collaboration. Even though there isn't a project yet, but it's nice that they can talk about it. And there may be, it might not be the Willamette Corridor project that comes up first. Maybe it's something else. And I think it's just good that everybody works together because rather than it cross-purposes. Any thoughts, Mike, Scott, or Rocky, or Adam?
I.
Go ahead.
I may. Thank you.
Jump in.
So which jurisdictions, is it both Westland and Lake Oswego who have the percent for the arts or just one of them? They both do. And it's my understanding that we do not. Correct. Okay. So I noticed in the letter, it mentioned, I mean, for those jurisdictions, it would be Highway 43, but for us, it would be Highway 99, McLaughlin Boulevard, sorry, Mayor. And so I noticed that that was outlined in the letter, which I appreciated. But since we don't have percent for the arts, and this is an explicit ask of us, what actions would you be taking to achieve the goal of trying to get that art investment on Highway 99 that would justify Oregon City even being a part of this?
I would imagine that we have to address it when something comes up. So let's just say when there are further plans and they say, yeah, Lake Oswego would like to put three along this particular part, Westland would like there. We have the opportunity, it would be up to the Arts Commission at that point to say, what can we afford and how do we get the money for it?
My understanding is when we did the, and Mr. Conklin will correct me, when we were working with ODOT on the McLaughlin Boulevard improvements, they have a provision when they make any substantial improvements like that, that's why we have the art piece on McLaughlin Boulevard, because that was part of their project. And I know John Lewis was working very closely with them on, on that project. I believe it came to the Commission at some point in time as an overview of the project. Did I characterize that correctly? The McLaughlin Boulevard project we did with ODOT? But that was my recollection that we had, that they have a percentage. Just so you know, we actually did try to.
We have.
Do that at one time. We did try to get the, get the 1%. And I know that under the previous Public Works Administration, that when they were doing projects, because we have art on 7th Street Corridor, there's art on, one art piece on the upper portion of Molalla as it gets close to 213. So we have done it, so it's kind of unofficial. But we don't have anything official at this point. And I remember you and I were, we came in to testify about we weren't on the Commission.
But there is something in writing, and the Oregon Arts Commission created something. So there is work that, I mean, is dated at this point. But I'm sure it could be found in archives. But it was a conversation to a pretty extensive level at one point because we knew we were going to be building multiple city facilities. And it didn't quite happen. But I think you could go back and look and find some of that instead of starting from scratch or also rely on some of the help from the other cities as well. But.
Yeah. The other thing to note is that this project, Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, but the outlook for it is five to 10 years. As the conversations unfold over those, that time period, and we kind of get an idea, a sense of what the potential cost could be, I believe the Arts Commission is willing to go look for funding from other sources as well, whether that be grants or sponsorships or what have you. Also, to Commissioner Smith's point, you know, there is that percentage for the arts that I think it is our intention to maybe dust off and have a look at at some point in the next year or two and see if that is something we want to propose back up to the City Commission at some point.
I think also that whatever you find, you know, I would, I would recommend that you pass that on through to staff. I know that there are other jurisdictions. And then there is the Cultural Commission that the state has. And if you make, you know, donation, then there's a portion of that that goes towards arts. And I know that there have been some projects in our county that have benefited from that because of the number of people that have donated through that. So there are lots of options.
Yeah.
So do we have, from the Commission, the City Commission, do we have?
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
So at a high level, this makes sense to me. But I have concerns. Our Arts Commission is funded by the taxpayers in Oregon City. And the funds that the Arts Commission distributes is for the benefit of Oregon City. This, at some point, is going to take time and money, or time and energy anyway. And so I just, I just have a concern in the back of my mind that, just that. It's an Oregon City Arts Commission, and that's where its focus needs to be.
This is not saying that, that the Arts.
I understand that.
We're putting money into the corridor project.
I understand that. I'm saying I have concerns about where this could go.
Where do you think it could go?
I just said, it could, it could go anywhere. It could go to us spending time and money in our Arts Commission, which meets only six times a year, doesn't have a great deal of time, doesn't have a great deal of money, gets wrapped up in projects that don't directly benefit Oregon City. That's where it could go. I don't know if it will. I wanted to get my concern out there, that's all.
May I say something? So my understanding about this, and again, this is so far in the future, which is really difficult talking about something that's so amorphous at this point. But if money and time was being spent, it would strictly be the art that was in our jurisdiction. It wouldn't be contributing to Lake Oswego and their art, and Westland and their art. It would be partnering with them. And so Lake Oswego would say, this is what we want. Westland would say, this is what we want. And then we would have to figure out what we want, how we're going to get it. But it's not going to go to the corridor project or any of the construction. Does that make sense?
I hear what you're saying.
Okay, all right.
I still have concerns.
It didn't help, okay. Rocky?
I don't have anything in addition.
Without, Mike, what would help? Is there something that you think we could do that would?
No, it's, as you said, it's years out, it's very amorphous. I just think there need to be, when it, when it comes time to projects starting up, that there need to be some checks and balances to make sure that the assets of Oregon City are, are to the benefit of Oregon City.
Well, I think in this, something that would. Huh?
Go ahead.
Well, in addition to that, we all know that commissions and committees change. So this current group of the Oregon City Arts Commission may have a full understanding of that. That doesn't mean that if you put yourself in a position that another future commission doesn't understand that. I mean, hopefully, we would be aware of that. Obviously, staff is involved. But we just know that some things, things get created and they don't end up the way they were supposed to go at some point. And that's just a general concern that we always think about.
Well, I would, I guess my suggestion then is if we are amenable to this or if we have a consensus about this, that we could draft a letter to the other two organizations saying that, you know, we had a discussion about it and that, you know, it is our intent to collaborate. You know, however, we know that these projects are down the road and maybe this isn't the project that we're going to be working on with you. But it is our intent to provide a cooperative environment to work together on arts projects that benefit, you know, the county, et cetera. Because I mean, you know, our individual jurisdictions and maybe there's a way to collaborate on ideas, not necessarily money, on other things. Because I think what we're trying to do is do some cross-pollination. So I think if we created a letter like that, that went along with, because there's nothing here to sign or anything. We just say, yes, we think it's a great idea, however, blah, 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 blah. So is that something that, would you be okay with?
Can I say something as well?
Go ahead.
To speak to concerns about how this might play out in the future, the City of Lake Oswego's Art Commission is extremely professional. And I think actually, working with them would be beneficial for our, our Art Commission. So if you're concerned about the Art Commission doing projects that are not benefiting the taxpayers of Oregon City, any collaboration and work with the City of Lake Oswego and even Westland, who are doing amazing things for their, their communities, would benefit the taxpayers. They would make our Art Commission a better Art Commission.
Well, I'll have Commissioner Smith and myself work with staff on creating a letter of intent that outlines our agreement to participate in collaborative things, but that we're going to put some guardrails on it. And then we'll bring that back for the Commission, Commission to still look at.
So I'm not understanding why the City Commission needs to write a letter if it's an Arts Commission letter to us.
Well, this, this letter of intent is, says, Dear City Council Members and Board of Commissioners.
Yes.
So they're asking City Councils of Westland, Lake Oswego, and Oregon City and Board of County Commissioners. They're not asking the Arts Commissions. They're asking us if we think that we want to be.
Right. And so that's why I don't understand why we need to write a letter.
Right. And so that's why I don't understand why we need to write a letter when we can just tell them right now.
Well, we can tell them, but we want, I want to try to address the other concerns that are out there so that we can say, yes, they think it's a great idea. And it can be signed by both of us or whatever, but they're asking the electeds about this.
I know. And that's why I figured why we had this forum.
Right.
But, okay.
Well, because we can't vote on anything here, so anyway. All right. Mr. Graham, are you introducing that?
No, I can introduce it, yeah. So item number two or B on the agenda and item number C are kind of tied together.
You mean two and three?
Oh, I was looking at this agenda here, B and C.
Okay. I'm looking at the staff report.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, item two and three on the staff report are tied together. They're both update, proposed updates to the municipal code related to the work that the Arts Commission does. Number two is specific to the Chapter 2 dot 26, which is essentially the charter of the Arts Commission. Kind of a little background here. Late last year, Q4 of last year, one of our Arts Commissioners was bringing forth some ideas around establishing some new protocols to help kind of guide us, make us more efficient in our work. Ultimately, we ended up having a conversation with the City Recorder, Jacob, about kind of these protocols. He gave us the advice of looking at the municipal code to see if there's changes we wanted to make there first, given that a lot of that code is 20 years old, referenced things that no longer even existed, civic trusts or something, I can't remember off the top of my head. But anyways, given that it was outdated, we decided to take up the activity of reviewing and then making some proposed changes to the municipal code. I was not the core author for the Chapter 2 dot 26 changes, but essentially, as the staff report says, most of the changes in there were to help try and clean up language, clarify things and address, you know, some of the protocol things we wanted to fix. I will note that there was one item that we caught it after we had approved at our last meeting, but under members' terms, so Section 2 dot 26 dot 020, second sentence, at least 60% of all members shall reside within Oregon City limits and the membership shall represent a broad spectrum of citizens within a minimum of one or a maximum of two citizens at large. That was the proposed change, although when we were looking at it, I think the math was off. We meant a maximum of three citizens at large. That would go hand in hand with the 60% of members shall reside within the Oregon City limits. Reason for this and kind of getting some additional, you know, input from Jacob was a lot of our commissions in Oregon City probably struggle finding citizens that live within the city. You know, a lot of us have Oregon City, a lot of people have Oregon City addresses that don't live with inside the city limits. But they do come into the city quite often or they work in the city. And so we want to try and make sure that we are able to capture those people that have the experience we would like to have on the Arts Commission, have, you know, participated in the art ecosystem in this area, in this region. And to do so, we thought having additional options to have people from outside of Oregon City proper participate would be beneficial. So that was one other change that we wanted to add to the other proposed changes that are before you now, but we can answer any questions you have.
We generally don't have a problem. The only concern I have with that is that all the other boards and commissions, we only allow two. The only one that we don't is, is the Youth Advisory Commission because we use the school district boundary. So I would be a little concerned of making that change. We, we don't, again, we've been fairly consistent with the number of people that live outside of the city limits.
Yeah.
With the other, with the other boards. And so we'll, you know, we'll just put that in the parking lot at this point in time. But I just wanted to let you know that because I was looking at that and I said, ah, okay.
Mayor.
How do we reconcile that? So we can talk about it.
If I could just really quickly, I, I agree with that, especially because I believe the Arts Commission is the only one of our boards or commissions that has a budget. And so given that they're entrusted with a budget of taxpayer dollars of Oregon City residents, I think I would be more comfortable making sure that Oregon City residents are on that board.
If I, if I may, the reasoning behind this for, for right now is we're looking for a diversity of members that can be on the commission, but then also offer their talents. And so there is a woman who works with Backman's Community College. She teaches art. She's been an artist for a very long period of time. She's involved in their boards. I mean, this is real talent that would benefit us a lot. And yet our two at-large positions are sort of taken up. So we want Backman's Community College as a partner desperately on this. Those would be awesome, but this is the only way I think that we can do it is to be allowed to have an extra seat. And that's that thing of, you know, okay, she doesn't live here, but she's deeply involved in the community and something that is important.
Oh, we'll take it under advisement.
Okay, I see if that helps.
I noticed that, well, she didn't apply for anything. She didn't apply on, to be on.
Well, because right now.
Well, we don't have any vacancies right now, but, but when we had them, when we were going through the interviews and all that, I, I didn't see her name come up on anything, so.
We're, we're working to fill our vacancies ahead of time. So it's, it's kind of part of the outreach of who would we really, really like? Who have we been trying to get? Backman's Community College, great. And then going and finding. But again, it would be futile to say, hey, would you, you know, could you come and help us if she, she isn't allowed? So tying this up first, either getting a decision on this would help because otherwise it would be useless.
Okay, we'll take it under advisement.
Yes.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I assume we can go look at this whole thing, but I've got three concerns. Two of them are in this section.
In that particular section?
Yes. A minimum of five or a maximum of nine. I don't think we want to have a minimum. I don't think any other board has a minimum. And, and city staff wouldn't know what to recruit to if, if there's a moving target between five and nine, how many vacancies there actually are. And there's also a concern at some point that you get five people on there and they don't want anybody else. So they say, nope, we got our five, we're full. So I think you just want to say a max, say nine members and you always shoot for the nine.
Yeah. Well, I, I think that it's really going to be up, they can make a recommendation, but it's really not going to be up to them. So we don't, like you said, we don't really have that on our, on our other boards. So one of the things I noticed that, that I think this commission would like to do is make sure we have some consistency in some places. Because again, it's confusing if there's moving targets all over the place. If this board does this and that board does that. And we were very clear when we passed the changes to the Youth Advisory Commission. Again, we are looking at the school district because we're looking at students. This is not quite the same thing. Neither is the Planning Commission or the Historic Review Board or whatever.
So my suggestion would be that it's nine.
Yeah, so.
And then on the idea of, on the next one, a minimum of one and a maximum of two. Again, I don't think you want to have a minimum because if you don't have one, technically you can't operate.
Yeah, okay, got that.
So whether, whether the right number is two or three, it should just be spelling out two or whatever, not, not one.
I would agree.
And then I was confused if we can move over. It's still in the same section, but it's the last paragraph in that section, member terms. Appointing shall have evenly staggered three-year terms. Members of the commission may reapply to a new term. I guess that means for a new term. Yet shall not serve more than two terms unless the mayor makes an appointment for additional terms.
Yeah, that, that doesn't make sense.
No term limits at all if the mayor decides to keep appointing somebody. So what is it we want? Two, three-year terms? That's, that's a discussion you guys can bring back to us. But my point is, as this is worded.
Not will.
There's, there's no limitation because the mayor could continue to reappoint.
Or some mayor.
That's all I have. Sorry if I sound old and cranky, but.
No, no, no.
But as Commissioner Smith said, if we're not clear in what we put in these things, people turn over and there's an amazing amount of institutional memory that we seem to lose and we don't, we end up not knowing what we want. So we've just got to be clear.
I will say, you may have been called a lot of things, but cranky was not one of them.
I was just going to say, I can vouch for Commissioner Mitchell. He's usually old and joyful.
I wasn't even going to use the word old, so I, you know, I'm going with that.
What did, and what did Ronald Reagan say? I won't make fun of my opponent's inexperience and youth inexperience.
My opponent's youth and inexperience, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I think I remember that. Remember seeing that on.
And it was over, it was Walter Mondale who was, you know, 70 whatever.
Yeah.
Real quick on that last comment. Are other boards, do they typically include a term limit? Do we know? I don't know off the top of my head.
Most of them are two terms. Prac is two terms, but you can be away and come back.
Come back, yeah, okay.
That's, that's one I'm familiar with offhand, but I think they all have it.
Yeah, Planning Commission is, yeah, two terms. HRB, I think you can, you can serve.
Okay.
Two, three-year terms, I believe.
Planning Commission is two four-year terms.
Terms, yeah.
But the question here is, there should be, there should be a term. That's the first thing, should be a term limit.
Well, that's what he's suggesting. I guess, how do you guys feel about that?
I agree to a term limit. I, I think one of the things that we're seeing is that as we're getting into building out how we would like to, the commission to be operating, to have somebody roll off of the board so quickly when some of these things, as we've been saying earlier, will take several years. So maybe having two four-year terms would be more suitable. I don't know what the other commissioners feel like, but it just seems like there's not enough time, like three years, and then you roll off and you get another. And I understand that you can stay for another round, but some of the projects that we're working on take a long time. You know, there's a lot of planning that goes into it. And so as you keep having this rollover, like you were saying, you lose some of the information. Sometimes the motivation for finishing that project gets dropped because a new group comes in. So I would, I would prefer if we have the term limits that we maybe extend the length of, of each term.
Any thoughts, Adam?
I would agree with that, but I know we had this discussion when I first started for City Commission term limits. And I think the same ideas apply to our advisory boards and committees because the problem becomes finding people who are willing to dedicate that much of their time. And so I, I don't necessarily want us to be in a position where because of term limits, we have a bunch of vacant seats because people have lives outside of work and they have families.
What?
So I, I would agree.
Any thoughts, Rocky? Do you recall? I, I think the first round was, I think they were three-year terms is what I recall. But I don't know where the three came, I don't know where the three came from is what, what I'm trying to rack my brain about.
I can jump in real quick on that.
Sure.
Because there's nine Arts Commissioners, if you have three, three-year terms, they sequence easily. If you were increasing that to four, then it becomes kind of jumbled.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's, my guess is where that number came from.
Do we know where the nine came from? Seven is kind of a nice number, but I don't know where the nine came from, so. We don't have a lot of other boards that have nine people. I mean, other than, again, Youth Advisory is over here in a separate category. I think Natural Resources has seven. Planning Commission has seven. HRB has five. Prac, I think, has a lot. I can't even remember now. I think TAC has, TAC might have nine. Okay, let's move on. Anything else on, on that particular, uh, Chapter 2.26? And I'm sure we'll all go back and look at it one more time and find a bunch of other stuff. That's usually the way it happens. And then again, we'll be reviewing this with our city attorney. She has looked at it, but you know, we'll probably do, you know, we'll do a really deep dive on it.
I can move on to number three. I know we have about 20 minutes, so I can.
We're good.
So number three is the same thing, municipal code updates, proposed updates. This one is for the public art murals, section, or Chapter 15 dot 28 point 090. This one, we were just trying to address some issues that we had run into while performing some restoration work on some of the existing murals in Oregon City. So clarifying some language that I, James, and the city attorney had kind of a conversation about. So that language has been added in here and reviewed by legal counsel as well. The other main thing that we tried to address was, well, I guess two more things. One thing was we wanted to expand the opportunities for murals in Oregon City by not just limiting them to wall surfaces, but to intersections and to, you know, one of the unique geographic features of Oregon City is the bluff overlooking the city doing roof murals. So removing kind of the reference of the word wall so that it was a little bit broader was one of our kind of goals there. The other thing that we tried to address in Section 8, yeah, B, Section 8, is the use of artificial intelligence to create murals through the printing of screen materials that can be applied to a wall. So our, our position right now is to try and leave flexibility in the municipal code and then come back at some point, once we've done enough investigation into it, on what exact policies we would like to implement as an Arts Commission around the use of AI to generate art that would be used for public art in Oregon City. I can try and answer any questions anyone has.
Well, I guess my question would be, what is the point of that? I, I am not sure that I am evolved enough to consider art created by something that's not a person art. But again, I'm narrowing my focus because I only deal with human beings on a day-to-day basis. I don't, you know, and, and other than Siri giving me wrong directions and stuff like that.
We're looking at, you know, scenarios where, say, an individual uses AI to generate an initial piece of art. And then maybe there's slight modifications to it. Maybe there's no modifications to it, but they still have taken the time to design whatever scope they need to within the tool, the AI tool they're using to create it. There's just a lot of questions and we're, we're finding a lot of different, you know, responses out there in the, in the art community about how to address AI, just like everyone is feeling, you know, how do we address AI in so many other circumstances? We wanted to give ourselves the flexibility to move up and down in terms of how we address it as time goes on and as more information comes to light. So having it not necessarily as a fixed point in the municipal code was intentional to give us that ability to put together a policy that was both robust, but also could be managed over time to address changes as, you know, society learns to deal with AI in everyday life.
Theses? Any words of wisdom?
I'll just add that we did quite a bit of research and there are other cities that are struggling with this right now where the AI. are struggling with this right now where the AI has been used to create public art, especially murals, and people hate it. So what we're going after is, we want the artist's lived experience, right? And we want them to be part of our community and, you know, there will be places for things like AI, but what we're saying is not on a mural, not on public art within Oregon City. And like Josh was saying, you know, things will change over time. But right now, we're looking for the artist's experience and their background and their personal human touch for the art.
I just have, did our city attorney review that?
Yeah. That specific language, I don't believe so. I believe that was added last minute after a final conversation and approval at our meeting. So I don't believe she has reviewed that.
Okay. I guess my concern, and I didn't even think of it until right now, is we cannot, what's the word I'm looking for? Content. We cannot control content.
Control content at all, so.
Right. So is the method, the way something created, is that's the artist's free speech? Are you infringing on the artist's free speech? And I don't know the answer.
Yeah.
I can, I, I...
I mean, by saying it can't be AI is directing what the content can be and you can't do that.
You're right.
Yeah. Trust me, that's why we were, well, I mean, we need to have the attorney look at it, but this is one of the things that kept us away from doing murals for many years. And so bringing murals back was an understanding that there was no, and actually banners, street banners as well. Someone can put a street banner up that says pretty much anything. And so there's a risk there that you take about the content of a sign or a content of anything. So it really needs to go through, through that, because I know that was a big issue.
I understand what, what you're trying to do and I don't disagree, but you've got to make sure the attorney's in the boat on it.
Yeah. Well, I, as I suspect, when this, you know, when we get to it, we're probably going to be going through it with a, a very fine-tooth comb again.
I have something to say.
Please.
So that is a very good point and AI is only as good as what is put into it. It's a machine learning program. So there is an element of, it's almost like a collaboration between a person's thoughts and then really advanced machine learning algorithms that can take those thoughts and pop out something entirely different or better or bigger or whatever. So I don't think, in my opinion, saying we don't want you to use AI to generate your artwork is saying that you can't say what you want to say. We just do not feel that this tool, using this tool to say what you want to say is appropriate.
And if I could, Mayor?
Go right ahead.
To build off of that, because I support the language and, I mean, obviously, I would also support the city attorney looking through this, but my assumption is that it would be more on whether we are regulating the content, not the method of creating it. I mean, because it is within our, our ability to say we don't want murals to be made out of spray paint. It's within our, it is within our ability to dictate how they are made. And, and getting to what you just said about how it, it's based off of machine learning, on the other side of this, there's the potential for legal issues because those artificial intelligence applications use existing work from human beings to generate what they use for their AI outputs. And so that's another legal thing where if we were to allow AI, it could potentially put us within liability for, for infringing on that copyrighted material.
Any other thoughts about machines versus, versus regular people doing art? What? Yeah, unfortunately, that's why I stopped watching so many of those sci-fi movies because when people's ideas start become like that, become, I'm scared, let me just say. Just think back about the first time all of us saw 2001: A Space Odyssey, you know? It's like, okay. I think, I know that there was a lot of back and forth about the authority. So the Arts Commission's responsibility is to review and make approvals of murals that are going to be placed within the city of, of Oregon City. I think that that's something that has been, was part of the original work that we did. I think where we were running into a little bit of, of discussion is that the Arts Commission, and I think, I hope we got it all straightened out, because you, you spent a lot of time talking to Kerry, where the Arts Commission was going to be not only the judge, but the jury. And that's got to be, we've got to definitely separate that. Because the funding that you have is, you know, is to help improve art, do things so you, you can get contractors, practitioners, or whatever, like the, the work that you had, we had, that was funded through the Arts Commission to redo the mural at Larteret Park that was from the old swimming pool. And so that's something that was a direct, direct fund from the city to a practitioner artist to recreate something that we are, that we had. And so that could also go in the opposite direction of, of that same process. So part of it is too, is that, you know, we were, we were having a discussion at our last meeting about the proposed metro enhancement grant. And that mural, I believe, will have to come back to you all. And I did make a off-the-record comment that we have a lot of stuff in this town that celebrates the salmon. And I don't know, what I've heard from the community is that, do we need one more thing that is celebrating the salmon? And what I got from just informal was, not really. So I'm hoping that we have, that you all have an opportunity to have a discussion about that because the enhancement grant approved a concept, not the actual thing. So I'm just saying it on record right, right now. And I did the other, when I was wandering around the last couple of months, I'd said, one, two, I think there's at least five plus things. So I was kind of glad that the Lee Kelly sculpture did not have anything to do with salmon whatsoever, even though it's right by Singer Creek Falls.
Thank you for saying that, because one of the things that we've been talking about quite a bit is how to diversify the art portfolio for Oregon City and have a variety of things. You know, there's historically the pieces that we've got and then building so that we have a lot more different pieces for people to enjoy.
I think that's a good way of saying it, that we want to diversify the art.
I can move on to option number four unless there's any final things on the municipal codes.
Well, we'll let you guys know when we get back to dealing with that, so you can participate.
Okay.
All right, let's go with the...
Item number four is our five-year strategic goals and plans. So over the course of the last few years, we have approached the idea of a strategic plan a couple times. Unfortunately, we haven't had the time to really focus on it, but one of my goals coming into this year as chair was to try and put something down in writing that we could use as our roadmap moving forward. And I think it's important for us to have that as a guide, like we were talking about earlier with people coming on and off of commissions, having some type of plan that kind of outlines the, you know, shared vision is a good way to keep everyone kind of pointed in the right direction, keep us on task, and to avoid us being reactionary versus proactive in our work. So a few weeks ago, we had a special meeting of the Arts Commission in which we identified several different goals. From there, we narrowed it down to a list of four, and I'll go over those here in a second. But first, in terms of next steps, just to clarify, these goals are very broad and generic for, by design. From there, we'll identify several objectives that go underneath, which are measurable. We will place a metric against those that we can easily track. And then we will identify strategies and tasks off of that and we'll use that to build out our five-year plan. We'll take those items and we'll be able to apply that against a calendar view of, of the next five years and be able to basically identify our roadmap moving forward. And that should give us a fairly good, you know, idea of where we're heading. When we come give reports out to you, we can give you a, an update based on that roadmap of how we're doing, how we're executing against our mission and our vision. And then we can easily identify, you know, success points by having those metrics identified and defined. Going into the actual goals themselves, so like I said, we had identified four, or we're identified four from the original, I think it was seven or eight. The first one is to strengthen the Oregon City Arts Commission structural foundation, building a strong foundation for the Oregon City Arts Commission by implementing best practices, standardizing operations, and securing flexible funding to create a leading public art program. This includes everything from, you know, the municipal codes that we're working on now, to some updates to our bylaws, which we're looking at, to just some other policies. We want to make sure that we're in line with, you know, the procedures that the city staff follows so that we are making things as efficient as possible, looking for new opportunities, like we said too, about funding, you know, so working with the finance team to make sure that we follow procedures if we want to apply for grants, that they're involved and that they, we know, you know, when they need to be involved and what they need from us. Same with Public Works and keeping up the cleaning of public art pieces, making sure that we're communicating with them correctly if we do an installation, you know, having best practices for them reviewing those to make sure everything is safe and stuff and when they need to be involved in that process. So all sorts of foundational items there that we would want to establish over the next five years. Number two is forge community partnerships through art, develop strong partnerships to engage the Oregon City community through art, connect city government, the regional arts community, and citizens to expand public art opportunities. This goes back to a lot of intent we talked about earlier. That's just one example. But we would like to broaden that by, you know, interact, more interaction with other inner-city departments like Public Works, Parks and Rec, other cities, you know. I had the idea this weekend, you know, we have several, it sounds like we have several sister cities, you know, is there something we can do where we can help promote each other through art here in the city? There's other art organizations that we could partner with. We have the Oregon City Destination Group that just got formed, which we would like to meet with and talk about, you know, how can we collaborate together going forward? So there's lots of opportunities here to build partnerships that we see that we want to focus on. Number three is enhance regional awareness and brand. Increase regional awareness and build a strong cohesive identity for the Arts Commission. Establish Oregon City as premier public art destination. Position Oregon City Arts Commission as a strategic leader in shaping the city's public art landscape by grounding our work in a clear vision and community storytelling. So we want to focus on a number of things with this, but basically we want to be seen as, you know, a, a thought leader when it comes to public art in the region. We want to make sure that we have the resources that we need to do the best job we can. And we want to also, you know, make sure that we are focused on the greater good for Oregon City through our public art program. So the last item is curate projects that enhance placemaking. So focus on projects that support the city's placemaking efforts, expand the city's art programs by diversifying artistic mediums, subject matter, and location to enhance tourism and community quality of life. Again, this one is kind of tied to an idea we will implement of a master art, public art plan, which will allow us to touch on a number of different subject matters, to your point earlier, Mayor. And then also the artistic mediums that we have, you know, most of us, when we think of public art, we think, think of three-dimensional or two-dimensional murals or sculptures, but there's a lot more public art opportunities out there that we can look at. And also in terms of just the kind of enhance, enhancing tourism and community quality of life, we had a, a young lady who came into our Arts Commission a few weeks ago and she, you know, gave out the idea of doing some type of mural that could be consistently updated, kind of evolve as the community evolves through the years. And it was a really good idea, a really good little presentation from her. And that would be something else that, you know, we could look at doing and implementing under this goal as one of our objectives. So I will stop there and answer any questions anyone has, or if any of my arts commissioners have anything else they would like to add to that.
I just want to make a, a suggestion on the goals. So the, within the A, B, C, and D, it refers to the Arts Commission as an acronym. Nowhere in the document do you spell that out. So either spell out Oregon City Arts Commission every single time, or have it up above that says, you know, strategic goals, the Oregon City Arts Commission, and then in parentheses, put OCAC, because it just looks weird when it's not defined. But I would say in your purpose statement, strengthen the Oregon City Arts Commission structural foundation. I would just write that all out and then you can refer to the acronym. So up here, we're at the first sentence, say the Oregon City Arts Commission, and then put in parentheses, OCAC.
Yeah.
It'll just make it look more professional.
Yeah.
And I do appreciate the fact that you kept them fairly broad because you get too specific and then, oh, you didn't do that. And that's, that's not, that's not really what we want to do. Any suggestions, comments? Okay. So we will get with staff and our city manager and figure out when we can schedule a discussion with our city attorney to go over the specifics of the code, because we're going to have to adopt it, so.
Do you mind, just so that everyone from our side knows, kind of what, after that review happens, what the next steps are in the review process? I'm not that familiar with, you know, the fair time period, waiting periods, review periods.
Well, we could talk to the master scheduler.
I think, you know, we'll go back and, and we'll probably bring this back to the city commission to have a discussion about what they'd like to see. And based on that discussion, we'll provide the edits in consultation with the city attorney. So, you know, once you're through that, because this is amending the municipal code, those two sections specifically, you end up with a public hearing to adopt the ordinance with the code changes for a first reading. We'd bring it back two weeks later at the next commission meeting, second reading, and it goes into effect 30 days later.
Okay.
But really, it's going to be when we can get this on the schedule to get in front of them again in a work session like this where they'd have the opportunity to review it, provide us feedback after they've had a chance to kind of digest this conversation. We'll go back and make changes and bring it forward.
Okay.
And obviously, we would, you know, want you to be participating, so.
Yeah.
Um, question. In, in terms of discussing it further after the city attorney and staff has had some input, do we come back? Would you prefer us come back in another works, work session kind of format?
I, I think we're going to need to have it on a city commission work session agenda. I don't think we're ready to go from there right into code adoption.
Just want to make sure.
But we will get it scheduled. I said, we were talking to the master scheduler.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. So we won't wait so long till next time. We have all, you know, we have all the boards and commissions that we have to get through and we're trying to get, meet with everybody, so.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Also, congratulations on the success of the Six by Six Art Show. I loved, I, I very much appreciated it. I purchased three pieces myself and had never been in that venue before, so I really appreciated that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before we move on to general business under item three, let's take a quick break. Okay, before we move on to general business under item three, let's take a quick break.
Every three months on where we're at and working on their goals and priorities. So obviously, we just adopted the budget, went into effect July 1. This is kind of the first three-month check-in as to what we've been working on, kind of where we're heading with to implement some of these priorities that have been identified. And really, it's just to have an opportunity for me to kind of talk about what staff is prepared in the staff reports for each one of the priorities that have been identified. Commissioner, obviously, ask any questions you may have. I did ask staff to be here tonight in case it gets into more specifics that I might not be completely aware of or well-versed and to be able to explain it a little bit better than they probably can, as the ones implementing many of the priorities that you guys have adopted. So I would propose to just work through, I'm just going to go through each one of the staff reports that have been created for each one of the priorities.
So you are or they are?
I'm going to. If I get in over my head, I'm calling in reinforcements.
I can't even imagine that.
Getting in over my head?
Exactly.
Well, happens often.
I would be shocked. I just thought we would have an opportunity to hear from the lineup, which, you know, I enjoy so much, and I'm not being facetious.
I know, yes.
I like to hear from the folks that we have the pleasure of working with. We get to hear from you all the time, which is lovely.
Oh, I was gonna say, thanks for backing that up. All right, any questions before I can jump in?
So staff, please feel free to jump in. I expect that you will.
Staff, if you jump in, you know what will happen. Okay, so we'll just go ahead and I'm just gonna work through the staff reports as they are uploaded on your, on your, on the, on the agenda packet. So we're gonna go ahead and start under the goal for creating a diverse, equitable, inclusive, and safe community. The priority was to identify methods to reduce barriers for community members to participate in city processes and to increase access to city services and groups. So what we've put together, as you, as you remember when we adopted the budget, we made some reallocation of the funds that we had available. This is one of the areas on this goal where the, the funding available was reduced by about half for the two-year budget cycle. So we've been working to refine kind of the scope of work that we had anticipated when we were putting the budget together to accurately reflect what we can do with the funds that are available to us. This first one is really to try to get a better understanding of who's currently participating in the various programs and services, and just as importantly, who is not from our community. The survey will explore barriers that may be preventing broader participation. Staff anticipates gathering information about varying departments and programs such as parks, facilities, rec programs, concerts, cultural events, commission meetings, community development, planning process. Data is the best way to implement, to have an impact on improving the participation. As part of the process, the city will ask a set of baseline questions such as who's currently participating in city, in the city and who wants to but is not currently? What programs and services are you most interested in? What are the barriers? So that would be what we're proposing to do to kind of start understanding this priority and where we can make improvements based on the community input that we receive.
And are you talking about this being a Oregon City resident survey?
Correct.
And it would go to lots of people, not just like a cross-section?
Well, I think we're working on that, just like we do the community survey. There's a way to do that that's scientifically, statistically valid, or it may be more general. I think we're still working through how do we, how do we get this information? Could it be through online surveys? Could it be through attending community events, getting information back that way? So like I said, you know, with this, this one, we're still, we're still working through to kind of really identify, but generally, this is the direction that we're heading to begin the process of understanding this priority.
I guess just sort of as a, a side question, but of the five of us, over the years that we've done the community survey, which I love, have any of you ever gotten that survey? You've gotten it twice. Have you ever gotten it? I mean, they wouldn't know, I mean, it's blind, but you know, I, I made the comment one time, I said, I don't even know somebody that knows somebody that knows somebody that actually participated in, in the survey, even though we have lots of statistical data. Because I always ask, I said, you know, if we had a community survey, did you get, get it? So out of the five of us, one. So that's probably a good statistic right there. Okay?
We're a community of over 10,000, 12,000 adults, and we, we collect about 400, to be a statistic. So we've done it three times. We get it eventually.
Well, you could always just give it to us separately, and then we could turn it in anonymously.
We move on to the next one?
Sure.
The next one is find methods to encourage Oregon city-based businesses to take part in city procurement process and to prioritize buying local. The goal here is to the creation of a small business vendor list for eligible Oregon city businesses seeking to conduct commerce with Oregon city government. You know, I think this is one we're definitely gonna bring back to the commission as we work through this, you know. We, we're, we're bound by, by state law and municipal code on how we do procurement, right? And so the commission will really have to make a decision if we, if we're gonna somehow wait responses to requests for, for RFPs or the work that we do. Because, you know, typically as a government, in most instances, not all of them, because there are some exceptions built into state law, you know, we're taking low bid, right? And so the commission is really gonna have to have a discussion and provide us guidance if this is a priority, you know, how do we go about waiting a local business that may not be the low bid? And so, like I said, as we move through this, this is definitely one of those we're gonna come back, because that's gonna be a big policy discussion and direction needed from the commission and how that's implemented.
Well, might I suggest that we check with our jurisdictions that are near us because other people are already doing it and still within the state law. And I know, I mean, we did it all the time at PDC because that was part of the budgeting process, that was part of the procurement process, and they had, they didn't do it from scratch. They looked at what other jurisdictions were doing and figured out something that would work for them. So I know other, other jurisdictions are doing, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. But I, I think, you know, it's just, it's, it's kind of one of those, my opinion about it is one of those commitments that, you know, in order to support our local economy, we have to figure out how to help them be more competitive. Because as we all know, sometimes the low bid is not the best bid. But sometimes we're forced to take it because of the way the laws are written and, you know, I've been on my share of bid openings where it was, yikes.
To me, it's as much shop local as it is buy local. We just need to make sure that our local businesses know what, you know, we're reaching out and making sure they know what the opportunities are.
Absolutely.
So that they can bid. If they, if they can't come in competitively, okay, they had a shot.
Yep.
So it's the shop part of it.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Mitchell, and I've said this every time that this is coming for us, is that I'm not, I am not interested in weighting it differently based off of if they're local, because I do believe that with the budgets that we're dealing with, the very stretched budgets that we deal with, that we owe it to our taxpayers to make sure that their dollars go as far as possible. And to go off of what the mayor said about the lowest bid not always being the best, that's why it's lowest qualified bidder. And so there are rigorous standards that are already there to make sure that it isn't just a low, poor-performance bidder. So I do have a hard time with that if we are going to look at weighting small businesses, especially because we don't really have a huge base of businesses that I can think of that would provide services that we're looking for as a city. And so for the very few opportunities where that would be the case, that's only benefiting a small subset of our businesses. So we have other economic development things that we're looking at and that we've budgeted, for example, dealing with the courthouse and, and the issues on Main Street without the courthouse foot traffic. And so that's more what I would be interested in looking at. But agreeing with Commissioner Mitchell, making sure that they are at least aware of opportunities is something that I would definitely support.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that we're weighting it because they're local, but that what I said earlier was making sure that they are aware that they can be competitive and to get some city business. Because I think it's important that, you know, we're not, you know, we're, let's say we have X commodity and we're getting it from, you know, South Carolina or whatever, when we might have a business in town who, if they knew about it or was able to, to support something that we're doing, they, they had the opportunity to do that. So, I mean, I participated, you know, as you're probably aware, in MWESB, which is minority, small business, emerging businesses. And they were very specific about making sure that they looked, and of course, they were qualified, they had to meet certain qualifications before they could even look at procurement. But there was a way to help support, you know, a small business or an emerging business. Because I know a lot of times for somebody that's just starting out, it's really hard to get, to get going, especially if you're like a one-person shop. But you might have, I mean, who knows? We don't know what it is. But I think we have, we need to help provide the opportunity.
Well, right, but if also if you're a one-person shop, that's an emerging business, then maybe you don't have the bandwidth to do a large public project.
Yeah, we don't know what, what it is, so. Could be graphics, could be a whole bunch of other stuff.
So I was not responding to you, I was responding to what the city manager brought up as a potential action item of it.
So how to look at it and make sure that it's fair and equitable.
Okay, so I heard you know, being, making sure folks are really just making sure that our local businesses are aware of the ability and, and what our needs are and what we're looking for, so that they have the opportunity to participate in case they're not aware of that, as well as, you know, how can we incorporate the buy shop local into what we're doing as a jurisdiction where appropriate and really not focusing on waiting responses, but really focusing on how to get people aware and hopefully submitting when appropriate.
Well, let's see what's, what's out there. See what other people are doing. They could be doing all of the above or none of the above. I'd just be interested in knowing.
Okay, the next one is to empower staff to identify, implement, and operationalize the principles of diverse, equitable, safe, and inclusive workplace. This project involves conducting a request for proposals to identify professional facilitation and training and planning deliverables. This is really focusing internally about facilitating the strategic support for the city's DEI employee work group, and then the design and delivery of staff training and leadership development, which aligns with both the DEI priority and the recommendations outlined in the state survey that we completed last year with all of city staff and the action plan that we put together there. Projects could include initiatives such as the aspiring leader cohort, leadership training, all-staff training. That's really one I've been trying to focus on, you know, that's something we just historically have not done here, where we've had mandatory all-staff training on a topic that's important, you know, once or twice a year. Does a couple of things, making sure we're, we're focusing on the things that we find important, that we should be focusing on. And it really is a good opportunity to bring staff, as you're well aware, we've got multiple buildings, just that staff interaction, ability to work together, get to know each other through those, those trainings, we found to be well-received over the last year as we started doing some of these all-city trainings. We have, we've shut down the city for a couple hours while we do that. In instances, I think the last one we did, I think we ended up scheduling six different trainings, just because of the variation in work schedules, when facilities are open, when they're closed, keeping facilities, some facilities open while we have the training, so we have staff there. But, but generally speaking, these have been, seem to be well-received by staff in, in what we've done over the last year.
So since we don't have a contract for a facilitator right now, does that mean that the internal employee DEI work group is not meeting, or are they continuing to meet in their absence?
Come on up, because remember, you won't be on the mic back there unless you want to take one of those over.
Yeah, that group has not been meeting since the end of, after the last couple of months.
Okay.
And will they be meeting again?
We'd like to get together, yeah.
I mean, I know you're a one-person shop right now, so unless we're cloning you.
Be interested in that. Yeah, we hope to, right? That's part of this, part of this, this goal is to re-initiate and get it going, keep it going.
And I reached out to the city manager and to our HR director. I have run into many of our DEI task force members and asked them to get back with me to set up some time if I could informally talk to them. I have managed to do three of them, the other ones have not gotten back to me for whatever, I mean, summer was pretty busy. So I'm hoping that we could get a meeting together that meets your schedule so that we could just sit and meet with them. Might as well just sit and talk with them, that way I'll get them all in one place. I've run into them, the store and the restaurant here and there, and it hasn't been, you know, some places haven't been appropriate to be having a conversation like that in a, in a public setting, so. But I have almost run into almost all of them, except one guy, that's the one I don't know how to get a hold of. So I'll get with you and figure out what, what scheduling works for you, see if we can get them together. I didn't, I couldn't remember what day they were regularly meeting on. I thought it was some, it was a Tuesday is what I was remembering in my brain, but I could be wrong.
Okay, any other questions for Patrick while he's up here? Don't go too far.
But you'll tell me before you leave, right? What day that they'd normally meet? When they were meeting?
I can figure that out for you.
Okay.
Okay. The next one is to strive to internalize DEI into the organization and reduce the long-term need for consultant assistance to successfully continue and expand workplace advancements, education, and training. So this is something that we'll be incorporating in with the facilitator when we choose them is, is how do we start to come up with the policies, come up with the trainings that we need to start to really remove that reliance on the facilitator to help with the work that we've done to date on this topic. You know, I think, you know, as you remember when we went through some of these discussions, you know, it's, and we, and, you know, we do see it right now, you know, and I think I've mentioned this before, I mean, Alex and Patrick have been, you know, really trying to do a lot to keep this moving while at the same time, you know, we had two HR staff for over 200 employees, we're down to one right now while we go through that hiring process. And when we had talked about, you know, running a very successful DEI program for, of a city of our size, right, it's just hard to just absorb into the existing staffing levels. That was one reason why we did ask for the consultant help for the next two years. But I think this will be a continuing discussion of how robust the program can be with the current staffing levels that we have. But we fully understood the commission's goal of reducing that, that, that use of outside facilitation and with, with trying to get this, this off the ground. Any questions on that one? Nope. Next one, work with the external community DEI task force to increase involvement engagement. So I think this is mayor, what you were just talking about. So we have, staff is here to assist with whatever discussions come from that and, and can kind of help as needed, depending on which direction we want to go.
Scott heard the cats where we're at right now.
Okay, so on to the next one, investment in city facilities and infrastructure. Create development plans for the Oregon City Pool and the End of the Oregon Trail Museum that reflect a community-supported vision for the future, location, and cost to update or reconstruct the facility. So the request for proposals has been sent out, it's currently, then we've received, I think we received six or seven of those. So staff is in the process of reviewing, and then we'll be entering into contract negotiations. Once that contract is finalized, it'll be being brought before the city commission for review and hopefully approval. So we are anticipating getting that for the city commission to consider in, in about a month. I think I might have said this earlier, for this process, we are treating the End of the Oregon Trail and the pool as two distinct processes in terms of public engagement, but we're trying to find one consultant. We think that there's economies of scale, there's just information gathering expertise, where we're not trying to train up and manage two consultants doing two public processes at the same time. But I do want to just emphasize that we are treating these, even though it may be one consultant team, they are two distinct processes that we'll go through for that. All right. You guys are letting me off easy. Increase community engagement, education, and outreach about the need for new funding sources to maintain, update, and expand parks and recreational facilities. So following the contract awards, we'll schedule several community engagement opportunities related to the Clackamette Park and Aquatic Center EOT design projects. So looking at podcasts, videos being available. We just had the Oregon City Fall Festival and those other public events that we do, really having a presence there to try to get information back from the community as well as educate them on what those opportunities may be once we get to a messaging that we can put out there. I didn't, I thought this was pretty cool, just 60th anniversary of the pool is in 2026. So that's a really neat milestone to actually begin a conversation about what do you do with a 60-year-old pool?
I saw a flyer somewhere, but I didn't, I didn't get one.
A flyer? I'm not.
No, I mean, there was a little, someplace I was at had a handout about like this, and it said, celebrate the something or other of the 60th birthday or anniversary of the pool. And they were all gone, so I don't even know what day they were even talking about.
We'll follow up.
Okay, that wasn't from us?
I'm not sure if it was, I'm assuming it was ours. Yeah, come on up, Scott, please.
Scott Archer, Parks and Recreation Director. We had some preliminary flyers, I think, that were floating around, maybe at one of the events this weekend. But we are still pinning everything down, and we'll be, we'll be distributing lots of public information about that in the near future. We'll make sure that mayor and commission get that info.
What did it say on the flyer?
I think it had a, I think it had a date and just some kind of preliminary info. I don't, I don't even, I don't have the flyer yet, so that's how preliminary it is, so. Yeah, we'll get you that.
Okay, I'm just, the reason I was, oh, here he comes, the reason I was asking is because I'm, I'm already being asked, so go ahead.
Our communications expert to the rescue. I unfortunately, I don't have the, the dates committed to memory, but it was also in E-Trail News, which went out last week, and you can see it on the website as well.
Okay.
So that information is there, and we've been working with the team over there, the information's gonna be starting pushed out on a much larger basis this week.
What's interesting on, on, what's not interesting, I think we're just gonna have to coordinate one of the, one of the items the commission asks us to bring back in a work session, and we'll be doing that, I believe, in November, is to just talk about, supplementing general fund funding, primarily around fees and other potential revenue generators. And so, you know, not, I think we'll just have to think about how does that conversation, does that conversation fit into this discussion we're gonna be having about, you know, how do we pay for these facilities and the operations of them, depending on what the outcome of that is, or if that's a separate discussion distinct from, you know, how we, how we deal with, you know, potentially building a new building or acquiring land and how we operate that new facility if we do build a larger facility. So I just wanted to put that out there, that other, you know, you could certainly see some overlap there, or if this conversation is really gonna be about two, two distinct funding discussions around two different topics, one being the stability of the general fund and the other being, you know, potentially a discussion about facility replacement, rebuilding, remodel, whatever that conversation ends up at.
So are you talking about in terms of just about the fee side of it, the possible anticipation of decline in revenues from fees, not only from the state, the feds, and whoever else we get things from?
No, I think this is building on the conversation we had around what our, what our current tax rate is, the amount of non-taxable property that we have in the city, the impacts that we have with being a regional center with significant higher impacts on our, on our staff, on our operations relative to the amount of non-taxable property that we have. So that, that was kind of the work session we were proposing to bring back to talk about.
Well, I found it, it says, "The birthday party will be held at the pool next January." So that's a very broad, that's fine. I just wanted some idea what we were talking about, so. It is there, thank you, Scott.
Any questions on this topic?
So how do you anticipate we will be involved in that process? Will it be similar to what we've done in the past, the way you've had, so when we were doing the Parks Master Plan, there was, you know, some initial presentation saying, here's kind of where we're going, and then they went away, and then they came back and gave updates, and then they went away and came back with, this is our draft plan, and they went away and came back, and here's our final plan, and we had discussions about it. Is that, is that kind of what you're?
I would imagine it'll be some iterative process like that.
Okay.
I know I had discussions with Happy Valley, they just are actually going out for a pretty significant.
Big one.
Bond measure, you know, just, we were talking with them a little bit about their process that they went through in terms of the community engagement, the outreach, you know, they were actually investing in statistically valid polling to try to find, you know, what is the right, what is the, what's, what's the acceptable amount of money that, that taxpayers are willing to contribute to a facility? They also had focus groups that, that talked about, you know, the messaging, the cost. So, you know, I think, I think all of that is probably up for discussion as we put this together, just to get an understanding of, you know, what the community would like to see and, and what we can, what we can afford moving forward.
Okay, sounds good.
Great. Consider a lobbyist support to identify and secure federal, state, county, and regional funding and grants for needed transportation, water, sewer, stormwater. Investment, investment to influence legislative actions that impact the city. So this one is actually great, I think everybody met Kelly, our new community development director. I know this is something we've talked about, is maybe how she could bring some of the expertise and experience that she has from her previous job and working with the legislature to maybe bring a little more consistency to how we go after money here at the city. And so the commission, I'm sure remembers, we did set aside some money for a lobbyist. So I think we're gonna work through, you know, if this is something that she could take on in coordination with the departments, you know, it's typically gonna be, Public Works is obviously a big one, Parks is an area where we, we receive quite a few state grants, you know, police has some, CD has some, and see if there's a way for the directors to work together and have her maybe be the point on helping with that. And then we'll have a discussion about the need for a lobbyist, based on where we end up in those discussions of what we could do potentially internally, or do we supplement that with, with a lobbyist, either at the state or federal level? Questions on that one? Nope. Okay. Strategically invest in IT systems that can keep pace with technological changes and advances such as AI while providing an accessible, safe, and secure information technology environment. You know, I think this one is, I think this is one of these where we've talked about, this is ongoing. This is what we, this is what Mike and his team are doing on a daily basis. It's really going through our contracts, the systems we have in place, you know, identifying where there's improvements that need to be made, keeping up with our licensing, making sure that we are, right now, we're in a pretty big process for the whole city of migrating up into the cloud via Teams, so they've really been spearheading that. Obviously, security is still top priority for us. We have a program called Know Before that we put out, his team puts out frequently, that all staff have to take. It's, you know, it's, it's a, it's an online training tool, so there's an educational component, and then a little test at the end, like last one we did was, you know, about phishing, right? So just reminding folks what to look for when we get, you know, emails, requests, the sophistication that this technology, the sophistication of the phishing and email intrusion that we're seeing is increasing exponentially. The, how emails look have become incredibly realistic, the amount of time, and you just really gotta be careful about what you're clicking on, anything related to the city. I will say, we did have another, we've had, we, we get intrusions attempts all the time. We did have another cyber attack, which we were able to essentially shut down almost immediately. So thank you for the investment that we've made and allowed us to make in terms of addressing our cybersecurity upgrades, as well as improvements to the network that we've been able to implement. So it's, it's, it's money well-spent from my opinion, just, I know it's not flashy and whatnot, but the amount of, amount of investment we make and the dependence that we have moving on, online, digitally, is just increasing and as are the attacks that, that try to, try to enter our system.
Well, when people ask Well, when people ask me, I cite the Tillamook County case of what happened over there, and I said, "This is why we're spending the money we are, so we don't have this."
Yep. Okay. Any questions on that one? Okay. Increase the material and content on the city's website and social media channels, as well as the methods by which they are produced and delivered to maximize the information provided in short and concise manner, including possible expanded use of video. So one thing we are working on that we'll be bringing back to you in the next couple of months is a discussion about the trail news. During our goal-setting retreat that we did, we had talked about kind of the, the evolution of trail news over time, which really started as a Parks and Rec program, and it's really expanded into essentially all the departments are putting information in there, and we talked a little bit about how, because we put it out quarterly, and the lead times to get there, a lot of the information is, is really stale, right? It's hard to have a date. It's in January sometime, you know, so it's hard to put those dates in there. And so we've looked at going to a more condensed, more like a reader, a couple page, almost like a newspaper, that we would potentially have the ability to maybe do monthly, so that the information would be much more accurate, and really pulling out what was all the, all the programming component and really keep that as Parks programming that would still go out to the community on that, on a different time schedule than the monthly. As you're well aware with the community survey, we love the trail news, so they love receiving it, so I'm always leery to change something people really, really like, but.
You're talking about maybe something similar to what Happy Valley does?
Correct.
They have a broadsheet that's four pages and comes out monthly.
Yep. Yeah. So we would really pull out a lot of the programming component and really just focus on articles that are more relevant or events that are more relevant in a, in a more condensed timeframe that we could deliver to the community. Another component of this, the staff gave a presentation the other night updating the website for ADA compliance, really looking at how the website's designed, how it's, how it's readable, how pictures are identified, so really trying to broaden how folks can utilize the information that we have on our website. And then we're really trying to, I think Jared's done a good job of really trying to incorporate some kind of shorter videos, working with staff on, you know, something we can put up on the website or via social media that'll be a little bit quicker hitting. Our Facebook page has, has a video up there recently with our sanitary sewer crews, which was.
Very good.
Which was very good. He always keeps me on my toes with what he's going to put out there, but generally well-received. So those are the type of things that we're seeing. I think we just did one as well. He did one with officers about cybersecurity, which was well-received by the community, and then probably looking at trying to get the podcast going again with staff to just kind of talk about some of the things that we're doing. Any questions on some of the steps we're taking on this one?
Nope.
Nope? All right. Expand community engagement and participation opportunities to creation of new public events and programs, as community open houses, forums, surveys, and town halls. So we just did implement our first OC Fall Fest on Saturday, so I really want to thank Parks staff for putting that together. I thought it was pretty well-attended, and I think it dovetailed nicely into the volunteer appreciation event right afterwards. So, you know, when we start to think about this, we, we talked a little bit about the 60th birthday party, the public engagement that we'll be doing around EOT, the pool, and then we are moving forward right now with the, the construction drawings for Clackamas Park and implementation of that master plan, and the timing on that is we finish the construction drawings and design, hopefully then rolling into the State Parks Construction Grant Funding Timeline about a year, a little over a year from now. We've also been able to keep running the Fourth of July event, and then just really trying to work on having staff available at more of the events that we put on, which is concerts in the park, movies in the park, National Night Out, some of those larger events that we've been doing. And so, you know, the one, the one question around this is, you know, is wanting more events. We do a lot of smaller events. We've got a couple of the bigger events. Like I said, I think for us, it was the Fall Fest and the Fourth of July, and we, we would consider those kind of larger events that we would put on. And so, you know, I think from, from, from where we're looking with the funding that we have available, you know, there might be a couple more events we had, but I'm, I'm not imagining large, big city events unless there's direction from the Commission on something that they would like to see moving forward, or we could implement maybe in a year or so from, you know, or two years from now as we, as we think about this. Any questions on that?
I know that there are community groups already starting to galvanize around the 250th, and I would say, you know, I, I don't think that we should do a separate event. I think we should incorporate it into something else we're already doing, like Fourth of July, because we're already, you know, we're already mobilizing for that. It makes more sense to me.
So the next one is utilizing those community events. So to me, these kind of, they cross over a little bit, but we did try to list out just some of the events where, where we have staff or will have staff participating. Fourth of July, Touch a Truck, Concerts in the Park, OCPD Summer Camp, Concerts, Movies in the Park, First City Celebration, National Night Out, the Antique Fair, 9/11 Ceremonies.
I thought the Antique Fair was like a private thing.
I think we still coordinate with them.
Well, we coordinate with them, yes.
So, you know, it's, it's just really trying to make sure that we're identifying the events that are going on and what role we can have in, in having a presence at those events one day.
Would this be, I don't know if it comes under this, but I, I've had some discussions about us looking at the city-sponsored large events, doing those on a two-year basis rather than a one-year basis, since we know there's two or three signature, two signature ones that we want to continue to do because the community anticipates it. We know that that's it. I, I just think if we know we're going to do that, going through that every year, to me, seems a little redundant. That way there's, can be a little planning more ahead. So is that something you guys would consider?
I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna get, I think I'm gonna get to that.
Am I, am I jumping the gun?
Yeah, I think one of the priorities was to look at our grant programs that included both, like Metro Enhancement Grant that you're aware of, we're about to revisit with.
Yes.
With James, and then, you know, I think that would probably be, so let me, I think we're going to run up on that one here in a little bit. Continue to support the CIC and neighborhood associations and strive to identify methods to increase community involvement and improve communication. So staff's working with Eleeville to get their representation back on CIC, helping South End to get reestablished, working with the Youth Advisory Committee. You know, I think we've always been, we've really been trying to make sure they understand, you know, I think we've gotten through their budget discussions, their budget questions, and I think it's just really continuing those discussions with them on how to be effective in trying to create neighborhood involvement for their neighborhood associations and increase the amount of folks attending those. Next one is to investigate opportunity and cost to enhance trail news and focus on more up-to-date, so I kind of talked about this one already when we were looking at different methods. There are a couple of these where there's, you know, there's, there's some overlap with them, but specifically, like I said, we'll be bringing back, I know Jared's worked with a designer on a layout for what a smaller trail news could look like, and so as soon as we can fit that in to the work session, we'll be bringing that for discussion to have a look at and let us know what you think of that. Okay. Advocate for proportional federal, state, regional, and county funding to address the impacts on the community and provide adequate local services to support the demand created by increased housing and social services. This one, I think, is, is one of these that's going to be ongoing, and I think this is probably one of those where this is probably as much a political discussion as it is a staffing discussion when we're talking about trying to influence other jurisdictions to take on a larger role as it is, as it is related to providing social services for their homeless community members that are in their communities, rather than relying on just Oregon City to be the place where folks come. So I think there's probably going to be, need to be a little bit more coordination between, by myself and, and, and how do we have that discussion with other jurisdictions? Because really, that's, that's, at that point, it's a political decision on each of those, those cities to decide what they're willing to do moving forward with that one. Unless there's different guidance you would like to give me on, on, on this one, it's, I don't know that I have a lot of leverage to go tell the city manager that they should put a facility in their town.
I think it's worth a try.
I have a feeling I know what the answer's gonna be.
Hey, so what? We asked the question, it's out there. It's out there, and it's out there in the, in the public domain. I did get, I will say this, I did get cornered in Safeway yesterday by a citizen admonishing me to support us building a shelter, and I said, "That is not happening."
You know, I think, I think the one area would be as grants become available around, like we have the three-year grant that we're able to get with SHS funding for additional community specialists, as well as the Caring Corps, the Community Court, and I think that's identifying those opportunities for us internally as our organization. But once again, I think, you know, I think those larger regional discussions about how do we, how do we handle some of the social service issues we're seeing throughout the county is probably a larger political discussion amongst Metro, Clackamas County, the state, the surrounding jurisdictions that are there.
The cities are at impact, are advocating for less, and of course, the counties don't like it, less funding to the counties and making some of that funding available to cities because we keep telling them, "We know what our needs are. We don't need another jurisdiction or the state telling us where we need to put those resources when we know where that is." So that discussion is still happening.
Okay. Work with business partners downtown, with the county nonprofits to address existing impacts and identify solutions, especially the impacts associated with the existing after-hours and weakened homeless service gaps, homeless service gaps. So the Commission recently had a, a work session about the implementation of an exclusion zone, so we'll be bringing that back for consideration and discussion whether that should be something implemented. So the way we were approaching this, once again, going back to some of that SHS funding, is, you know, how do we put together as many resources we have available at the local level to try to impact change that we see here in our community that's impacting our community, or for homeless community members here who are struggling to get services? So it's, it's, it's been, you know, we've, as you're well aware, we've hired a, we've had a homeless liaison officer, we have behavior health specialists, we now have case managers, we were able to get SHS funding for a community court to really focus on the service component rather than the criminal component of some of the behaviors we're seeing. So I really do consider the exclusion zone as part of the package of how we, of how we address, how we implement some of the services that we provide here in the city. So that's the focus right now, and we'll be bringing that back for the Commission to review and discuss further and see if this is something that they would, that you'd like to implement in, in, in downtown. Staff, Chief Davis continues to meet with Love One and our homeless outreach specialists with Downtown Oregon City Association, really just trying to make sure we have those relationships and those open lines of communication to kind of talk about what, what we're doing, what resources are available, as well as to hear some of the concerns or, or, you know, some of the things that they're dealing with, and if there's ways we can, we can start to address some of those things that we're hearing from the businesses and community members.
I have a question on that one.
Sure.
So, under that goal, I'm not seeing a notation, but to refer.
Which, which priority? Does it work with business owners or the proportions of federal?
To provide for social services, one. Under status, it says, "We utilize our Love One homeless outreach specialist to provide social services and outreach." I'm assuming when you say "our," like, I'm confused by the, by the wording of that because it implies that the Love One person is a city employee, so I'm trying to understand.
No, so we were able to, with, as part of that, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong here. So we were able to get to two grants from the county. One was for the Community Court, one was essentially a pass-through contract for a homeless, for homeless outreach specialists. So the grants through us, but they're not our employee, but, but we work hand-in-hand with them, and I don't know if you want to expand on that a little bit?
I just agree with him, is the focus is of that outreach specialist to focus solely on Oregon City and homeless individuals that are currently in Oregon City. So Milwaukee has one, very similar to that, so that's kind of partnership for that. So when I say "our," it's kind of the focus of Oregon City and our community.
So they are an employee of Love One, but a pass-through entity for the grant funds?
Correct. And she comes here, she works closely with our officers, our officers contact her directly when they're dealing with someone, they work, she works really closely with Val and Chelsea in our VHSU.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Originally, in that, in that grant request, we, we had initially proposed that it be a city employee on a, a limited term, but, you know, the duration of the grant's three years. We had originally proposed that it be a city employee just because of the interaction with our officers, with Val. The county kind of pushed back and really wanted it to go out through the, you know, the nonprofits that are out there. So we did amend that, that grant so that essentially we become the pass-through, but we do, like Sean said, I mean, we have a lot of interaction, that's our, essentially our resource for our community. But I understand what you're saying, but so, no, they are not employed by us.
So you're, were you implying accountability with that?
No, I was implying that I wanted to get clarification on it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions about kind of steps we're taking on this one?
So they report directly to somebody at Love One?
Yeah, there's a supervisor there, and they report to us, too. So it's kind of like a, a partnership with Love One.
Okay.
Okay. Provide for social services while utilizing enforcement as needed to meet community members. Once again, I think these, these two or three, they, they overlap significantly, so I think a lot of the, the work we're doing is kind of applicable to one or two priorities at the same time when we're looking at these. It's really about not only our what we're doing, but how we're communicating it with our partners, our community members out there, that the resources are available for our homeless community members, as well as the residents and businesses. The one, I think I might be jumping ahead a little bit. I thought maybe I missed, skipped over it, but we are in the process in working with the judge, and the judge really did a ton of work really spearheading the creation of the Community Court. I believe it starts, the first court hearing will be on the 15th. We have looked at, we're not going to hold it here at Libkey, where we hold municipal court for criminal cases. We're going to hold it in the community room across the way here at Community Development. So I think that, you know, the, the thought is just a little less formal, intimidating place to have these conversations around social services, getting help, whether it's mental health, substance abuse, housing, you know, domestic violence, you know, just depending what that would be. I think the judge just felt like it, it would be a little bit more appropriate and a little, little less formal setting. I know this is one thing in implementing these discussions, and I know I am going to be bringing back Caring Place for a discussion pretty quick, and we'll, I think we'll get to it later tonight, when the dates are for the upcoming work sessions. In the discussions that, that I've had with the judge, as well as the, the nonprofit trying to construct that facility, was designing that in a way that we could move Community Court to that new facility that they're proposing to construct. The thought basis around that is, the idea of the, of the Caring Place is that you have a centralized location for all a centralized location for all the services that we can get into there, that they're able to locate there, whether that's nonprofit service providers, county, housing, health and human services, social security, right? So if you could have community court at the location where all the services are, you could imagine a more seamless transition of, here's what the judge is sentencing you to do, you know, maybe it's six months of mental health appointments, we have a case manager or a caseworker who's right there, who can help them with coordinating, you know, really trying to provide that resource to not only have the resources there, but having someone help somebody navigate through that process. So I guess, maybe I have not been as clear as I should be, you know, that is where, where my head was, was that we would coordinate with them about our community court being at that location. So I guess I just wanted to, like I said, I just wanted to put that out there. When we do talk about what do we do, how do we partner, how do we coordinate, that is one area that I have been behind the scenes communicating with them. We've talked to them about the needs that we have, like, you know, space-wise, and you know, the judge needs an office, you know, like, we were able to hire a court manager specifically for a community court, they'll need space, you know, what do we need for A V, right? So I mean, there is that coordination going on, so if I'm way off base, please let me know.
Nope. Anybody, everybody feel comfortable with that? Yes, no, okay, yes, Adam? Rocky? Okay, great.
Increase communication about the services, resources, and the role of the city and steps that are being taken to address homelessness. I think we've got, you know, I think once we get community court going and kind of see how that's going, I think there'll be an opportunity to talk about that resource a little bit more. Just so you're aware, you know, the prosecutor really makes the decision about that split in the road between criminal and social service as, you know, depending on the, the details of, of, of the incident. I think right now, I don't know, Matt, you can correct me, I think last time I heard the first court date, I think we had three people that are going to be going into community court. So this will be something that we're also tracking, you know, how is it being utilized? What are the impacts, so, you know, from that as we spin that up and get that working? I feel like I went backwards here. Continue to be a regional leader, identifying, implementing creative solutions and partnerships to reduce homelessness's impact on the community. Talked, I mean, once again, this is all wrapped around the SHS funding and trying to get that implemented and spun up, bringing the additional resources for the homeless outreach specialists, as well as the community court, and moving that forward. I would also put in here, once again, I think you have overlap. I'm not sure it's a regional leader, it's not, it's not new, and it's not, it's not groundbreaking, you know, but looking at the exclusion zone is another way that we manage the behaviors that we see. This is not necessarily a home, this is not a homeless issue, it is a behavioral issue as we talked about at that work session. You know, we've seen videos that we've had of, you know, people, you know, having fun kicking our elevator doors in, right? There is something that would probably qualify through a criminal, criminal case related to exclusion. Want to come in and beat our stuff up, you know, we're going to have an issue with that. So that's another area that, that, it's just another tool that we're, that we're trying to identify to utilize. I've talked quite a bit, I already jumped ahead on this one, sorry, about the community court. So defense attorney has started first session, they're going to be, community court's going to be happening the second and fourth Monday from three to five, and then we've been reaching out to the service providers so that they're aware of, of the caring court and what, how we anticipate to run that moving forward. Advocate for engagement and partnerships with neighboring communities, I've already talked about that one. So moving on, ensure a smooth transition and the necessary support and coordination between the destination marketing and management organization in the city. So we've met with the new executive director for the D M M O. We have her coming before the city commission, I believe next month, just for an update on where they're at. You may remember that when we, when we created the organization and we, we put in milestones of when they needed to come back and give updates to the commission, so this would be meeting that first milestone related to setting up the organization, putting together a work plan. So this will be the first opportunity with the commission. I know some of you have already met her individually, but for all of us to sit down together and kind of hear where they're directing.
I was just asking him if he's met her.
Yeah. Okay. Review the process for public and private event planning, city grant processes, and the metro enhancement grant program, determine if the applicable submittal and review process can be simplified and/or improved. So we're, I think we already have on the books an opportunity to meet about the enhancement grant. Committee is going to meet a little bit earlier to talk about how that program's going, if there are any changes to be recommended, and how that, on how that process is done, or what the focus of, of those grants are. And then, still working on program procedures and application guidelines to improve the application process, this was something that was brought up about revisiting how we're, how we're handling city-sponsored public events, and kind of looking at, you know, having had that in place now, are there some things we can do to, to kind of improve that process as well?
I will say this, just as a commentary, that, you know, although I've heard initially griping about the barriers that the city now has, which I'm glad we have those, because unfortunately, in other jurisdictions, there have been incidents, is, and I am very grateful that we do have them. I have talked to a couple people and said, "Well, we don't want to go to the what-if, and these are the protection against the what-ifs."
All right. So focus on the marketing and development of the employment lands within the Thimble Creek Concept Plan and along Myers Road. We're looking to convene a meeting of the Thimble Creek Ad hoc Committee to discuss the property owned by the Clackamas Community College and identify other properties that may be ready for development in the next month or so. And then, and then bringing that back in a work session to meet with the commission and kind of give an update on that. Staff has met with several property owners out in the Thimble Creek area. You know, I think it's really, as you're well aware, you know, it's just, you know, you've got a lot of parcelization out there, some smaller lots, some, you know, some larger tracts of land that are still parceled, but under at least one ownership. Those probably have a higher, a higher potential, like most things, especially around employment and industrial lands, you know, it's just, it's the cost of the infrastructure to get it out there. You know, so when you're thinking about, I mean, we're slowly making our way down Beaver Creek Road, essentially from 213 south along Beaver Creek with some new infrastructure coming in. But, you know, it's more than just providing water and sewer, you know, when you think about, you know, half-street improvements, you know, the, the road construction, you know, the cost of the land, you know, the math gets really hard when you're looking at employment lands versus just straight-up residential.
Is this ad hoc committee basically, because I was thinking about something from a while back, which was when, for the longest time, Commissioner O'Donnell had a committee assignment that was like the Beaver Creek Area Blue Ribbon Committee. Is this basically a recapitulation of that?
I'll talk about it.
Nope. As far as I know, it isn't.
No, it's not a recapitulation of that, it's really a new initiative to get the Thimble Creek Concept Plan moving, because as you know, it's been out there for 16 years.
So what was the purpose of that committee, the other?
To, to exactly that, to, on that committee, you have, as you know, two commissioners from this.
No, the other, the other.
The Blue Ribbon Committee, before your time.
Oh, I haven't, I don't, before my time, I don't know. But that purpose was, but I know what our purpose was and is. But I don't know if much happened according to that.
We did have that, I recall that committee didn't really go to the extent that this one does, because we now have code language that puts this into a plan and a process, whereas the Beaver Creek Road stuff never had really any planned documents or anything to say, "Okay, this is where we're going to do it." So when we went through the, the planning process with Christina, with all the presentations, we now have a set, you know, we know where we're going with that. And whereas I don't recall that we did anything similar to that for the Beaver Creek project that Frank was involved in.
Look, go back and look, for some reason, I think the, the Blue, I think there was a metro grant associated with looking at providing infrastructure, what the cost would be to get the infrastructure out there, so it's been this incremental, kind of adding new and relevant information to the costs of trying to develop out there.
So it's more like building upon?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Like I said, I think one of the struggles is, is just getting the needed infrastructure to these sites as we continue south down, down Beaver Creek Road. Complete the feasibility study for the expansion opportunities of broadband. We just need to bring this. In a nutshell, what you're, what we're going to find, what the study really found was that, you know, the, the difficulty and the extreme costs or the expense associated with, for lack of a better term, you know, the last mile connection is, really makes it cost prohibitive, like, to look at it from, you know, one of the options was like a Sandy Net where the city provided broadband to residential. It's, it's really expensive to get those last connections, especially when you don't know you're going to get all the connections. You know, the hubs, the, the main lines where we have fiber that could potentially be utilized have a lot of fiber in them, is, is really what we're going to see. There's probably opportunities to maybe try and partner or incentivize with, with a carrier, but I think you're still going to run into, in the built environment that we have, you know, really getting that, getting it from essentially like a Malala where we have a lot of the fiber in there, how do you get that back into the neighborhoods? It, it gets very, very expensive, and, you know, as you've got cord cutting going on, you know, I mean, it's just, the, the options are, are limited, or it's a very significant, significant investment to be a, a city provider of, of broadband. But we will finish that. This was a, a previous public works director and right-of-way manager, and so there was a little bit of kind of resetting here now that we've got new folks in on this, but, you know, having, having looked at it, there's not too many options.
What is the work that Zipley is doing around town?
As we've all heard about.
What's Zipley doing? So like, yeah, so they're bringing, they're bringing fiber into some of those neighborhoods?
Okay, and then what, they're going to sell a fiber connection once they're done?
Is that a company, or they just do the, putting it in, and then it's somebody else that's actually providing the?
I believe Zipley's the company.
Company, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd never heard from them until I started getting the complaints.
Yeah. So yeah, I mean, they're, they are working with our public works department on the, on the permitting. I don't think most people realize, but most of our newer, I mean, we're, this is probably going back to the eighties.
Yeah.
When subdivisions were done, we used to get what was called a public utility easement across the front of every lot. So you have the back of the sidewalk, and then you usually have upwards of a five, if not a little bit larger, what we call a P U E, public utility easement. So essentially Zipley's working within the public utility easement to bring in a utility. I don't think most people realize, you know, they see people drilling under their front yards or putting in junction boxes. So yes, it's, I think it's caught some folks off guard. We've talked to them about better communication, door hangers, reaching out to the neighbors as they're getting in there and doing that work.
Thank you.
We'll see. Participate in discussions with Clackamas County, determine the future of the downtown county courthouse and how to safely and securely manage the building while it's vacant to ensure it does not negatively impact the downtown business and visitor experience while maintaining public access to Liberty Plaza. So you're well aware, the county is working on a disposition and development agreement with purchaser of, of the courthouse. The current plan is demolition of that, of that building and then redevelopment of a new building. So we'll continue to, to work with the county and the new investors as we, as we get more information. There's been minimal outreach to the city at this point about, about the project or what the plan is. I did review the draft D D A when it was going in front of the Board of County Commissioners. It did include a, a portion of that where essentially a lot line addition or partition would be done to carve out Liberty Plaza to the benefit of the city moving forward. So I think this is something we'll keep you updated as we get more information about what the actual proposal is through a pre-op or initial meetings that happen prior to development of the property. Okay? Identify opportunities to support downtown Oregon City businesses in response to the relocation of the courthouse, including updating the parking study, potential business support programs, and employee parking opportunities. So code enforcement will be coming back in November. The last work session the commission asked us to come back with, we had very limited data on change in parking meter revenue that was being generated while the courthouse was there versus once the courthouse left, so we'll be bringing back updated revenue year-over-year changes, as well as the commission asked us to look at changing the parking from two hours to three hours, so we'll be coming back with cost estimates to make that happen down in that area for consideration. And then, just really trying to think, you know, offer more parking opportunities in downtown. I think this is something, I know we've, we've discussed in the past, and just the timing wasn't right with the courthouse leaving and, and whatnot, you know, it, it'll be interesting to try to monitor what's happening with the private lots down there, because once the courthouse left, a significant number of the users of those, of those private parking lot spots have, have left. And we, we see, what we see is now you have a lot of capacity in these private lots, and a lot of it is on through our parking program. We have both metered parking downtown, but also parking passes, monthly passes. I believe we're probably, I think we're 50% of market rate on our parking passes. Obviously, that discrepancy makes it really hard to get folks into the private lots and off of the public streets. So when we, you know, we got, I think we got to look at this and have a discussion at some point a little bit more holistically about how are we going to manage our parking program down there now that we know that there's excess capacity in the system, even though it's not owned by us? So it's either, you know, a combination of, you know, does the city consider raising its monthly parking rate to start to drive folks to the private side? Or eventually, is the market going to drive down what the price being charged by the private lots are to make it a little bit more affordable and try to fill those up? And I, I don't know the answer to that, but, you know, a discrepancy of 50% is pretty significant, a pretty big disincentive. So there is parking available, it's just a lot more expensive than what we charge. Let's see. Investigate opportunities to expand the enterprise zone, vertical housing tax credit and other programs in the mixed-use commercial employment industrial areas to support and encourage businesses' employment and housing investments. So the enterprise zone was submitted to Business Oregon and was approved. The adaptive reuse rehabilitation building program, we'll continue to work with the, the group that came before you a couple weeks ago, London Aesthetics, as the business moves through the permit entitlement process. And then staff will identify another applicant to apply the remaining funds for the adaptive reuse rehab program. So really just trying to focus on some of those existing programs we have and making sure we can maybe find some applicants to utilize the funds that have been appropriated for those programs.
And then when would work begin on the vertical housing tax credit?
Not sure that we have a date yet for that. It's something we can, we can, we can look at, and I get back to you, when we can try to look at what that would be. Do we, do we have that, the vertical housing tax credit?
We have a program existing, right?
Existing, right? It's just where the boundaries of it are?
Right. We're going to change a little bit.
You talked about expanding it in the mixed-use zones.
Yeah. Create pre-approved designs for accessory dwelling units that would be allowed throughout the city. the city with the exception of McLaughlin and Kenema. This was not funded, so it was originally funded in the budget and we removed it. We just left it on here because with some of the legislation coming out of the state, it does sound like there's going to be a state-approved house plan that essentially you can just walk in, plop down on the counter and get a building permit. And so we just left it on here because it's probably something we'll be, hopefully be involved with and consulted upon. We'll at least be tracking it so that we can keep.
I appreciate your optimism.
That's what you're paying me for, Scott.
I think there was a collective rolling of the eyes.
One can hope.
Yes, I know. I do have just a monicum of hope. It's always there.
But, so, we're not doing work on this related to ADUs. It's more of, we're going to have more legislation coming down addressing housing, and we already know one of them is potentially going to be multiple over-the-counter houses. And so we just thought it kind of fit into this a little bit.
Reminds me of that song by Marvina Reynolds called Little Boxes. Everything's going to start looking the same, which is not what we want.
Continue the process for discontinuing city use of Center Street property. So Dana and her group have done a pretty good, have done a lot of work. I think we've been, I've been keeping you updated. This is one of the projects that we, I provide you updates on monthly. The winter, the winter response material, we're working on getting the permits for that, moving all that up to First Street. I think we're getting close to coming and having a discussion with the commission. And this is going to be around, are we demolishing the building? Are we keeping the building? You know, what do we want to do from, from a zoning standpoint? This is going to roll into workforce housing, you know, is this going to be a property where we focus on trying to find a partner for workforce housing on that property? So I'm feeling we're, we're close enough of cleaning that property up and getting all of our stuff out of there. I did, I mentioned we're working with a long-term intergovernmental agreement with Water Environmental Services for our, for our vac truck sewer so that we can, we don't have to create a decant facility for that just because of this odor associated with that. So we're, we've got that addressed. So those were really the two kind of operational outstanding issues around Center Street. So I think we're getting to the stage now where it's, what do we want to do? And how do we want to do that with that property?
Well, okay, I was just going to say that last night at CIC, when we were, when they were doing the roundtable with the neighborhood associations, McLaughlin was saying that they received a presentation from the city and that it was presented as though we had decided that we were focusing on first-time homebuyers, which was a surprise to me because I do not believe we've had that conversation.
We talked about that for the housing on.
The two properties.
Yeah, the two houses. That's the only time we've talked about it. We didn't say down there. No.
Okay.
I think, I know I've given presentations where we, where we, we talk about, or I've talked, I talk about how the commission is really focused on missing middle.
Right.
In workforce housing or first-time homebuyers, rather than kind of the lower income or voucher housing, because we feel like that's being addressed by the county and we have the housing authority. So there may have been some misinterpretation of.
No, it was the two properties. So did Urban Renewal decide about the qualifications for who would be able to buy those?
Not yet, no.
We just generally talked.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought. So I just wanted to make sure that nothing was formalized on that because of the way it was communicated to me last night.
Yep. So we're working through notification of the owners of the two homes, as well as lined up an appraiser for both properties and home inspections. So once again, I think this is becoming timely in terms of, is it just going to go, I mean, is it just going to go on the market? Is it going to go to a land trust? Is it going to be tailored to a certain buyer? Those discussions still have to happen as we're working through getting them ready for, for sale and, you know, vacated.
For both the two houses and the Center Street property?
Yes, yes.
If they're separate commissions?
But they're separate, because the two houses are Urban Renewal.
Yes, and that's why I just said if they're separate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, they're definitely separate discussions. We've got Urban Renewal on one, city commission's going to be the owner of the other.
Would we be able to make an inquiry to them, either of them, if they were, see if they would at all be possibly, I mean remotely possibly, interested in buying them?
If that's the direction of the Urban Renewal Commission?
I mean, I'm just, it wouldn't hurt to know if they had any interest in it. Maybe they have any, maybe they haven't even thought of it, maybe we haven't asked. If they were for sale, you know.
I think that's the discussion we can have with Urban Renewal and they can provide direction on how they'd like us to move forward. I mean, they could certainly, once it goes on the market, make an offer.
Put it on the list of a question we can ask Urban Renewal when we meet again.
Okay, so that's Center Street. And then this one really works into that, that same, that question about Center Street. So we've got the, what condition do we want to get the property into? Building-wise, what we're leaving, what we're taking down, zoning, comp plan amendment. And then we have the discussion about the use. What, you know, investigate the use of Center Street for workforce housing and potential public access to the upper yard and the two parking lots for private residential development. So we've got Center Street and then the two parking lots right across the street. Consider the creation of an inclusionary zoning program, extend the vertical housing tax credit where appropriate, primarily in the mixed-use zone. So we'll come back with a better timeline on moving that one forward. Implement tiered system development charges and reduce charges on workforce housing and smaller housing units while remaining revenue neutral. So, you know, the commission successfully implemented a tiered system for SDCs, for the parks SDCs just recently. So Dana's really doing a lot of work, starting to work with the city's consultant to develop a scope. And it's really looking at which, which, which SDCs can we, can we consider and look at tiering? And then associated with that conversation, we'll be advancing the updated sanitary sewer SDC methodology to incorporate tiering. And then we'll bring that back for the commission. So I would imagine how this is going to go is kind of a broader discussion about tiering and SDCs, and then we will, then we'll focus in on implementing them as we make the capital improvement plan, master plan updates and those SDC changes moving forward. The other one that we've talked about a little bit is around when we collect the system development charge. So we collect it, most jurisdictions do this, prior to issuance of building permit. So when you think about the leverage that the city has to ensure that it gets its payment, and there's a couple of reasons. One, there's a big incentive to either pay the SDC or bankrupt the SDC to get the building permit. So what we're looking at are what, what are the positives and negatives of deferring collection of the SDC to a certificate of occupancy? The one risk, especially on the residential side, well, that is more than one, but, you know, I, it would be very, very difficult if someone were to move someone into a completed house without paying the SDCs. We're probably not going to kick the person out.
I don't think we would do that.
So you're probably in a situation where we would, we would, we would probably lean the property at building permit and then collect prior to C of O. And so that's going to be a messaging thing. It's going to be something big and bold. I cannot envision a scenario where we would offer anybody a temporary certificate of occupancy without paying the system development charges or bankrupting them.
Good. I don't think we should.
The risk is way too high.
Yeah.
Once the occupancy happens. The other concern is, and we deal with this, I think, you know, homebuyers don't always realize or comprehend everything they're seeing. You could end up in an instance where a property is sold with the SDC still outstanding and the new property owner is now liable, not realizing it, assuming that, you know, because usually it's already paid for, or it's, it's a bankrupt and leaned against the property. So upon sale, the SDC gets paid. So we just want to think through, how do we protect a property or buyer if a builder sells them the lot and doesn't tell them or they don't realize that, oh, I got to pay SDCs, yeah, no big deal, and they don't ask how much they are? You know, it is something to just consider in how we implement this.
And what, what about our risk? I mean, I'm concerned about the potential homebuyer, but I'm really concerned about the risk for us. And then how does that help us with our bottom line? If we're deferring these SDCs out and we have budgets that are based on being able to utilize some of those fees, then we don't get it?
Well, I mean, you will. I mean, the SDCs.
Eventually, but you know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the difference between getting a SDC payment or bankrupted, I mean, the bankrupt, we're not collecting it, we're just charging interest on it and they're making monthly payments. The SDC, you know, let's say somebody is just, let's say a developer right now pays them, pays them in, you know, upfront to get the building permit. Home takes eight months to build and two months to sell, right? So we're losing 10 months of SDC revenue. Like in the grand scheme of our SDCs, it's not significant over the long run. And I think Matt just put out an update, you know, on outstanding SDCs that have been deferred. You know, yes, I mean, eventually we'll get them. You know, I'm, I'm not as concerned about a eight, nine, 10-month lag. You know, bankrupting them is actually harder for us, because, you know, the payback on that is years if you don't come in and square up upon sale of the property. But it would be something we've, it's something we've heard from the building community. So it's something we're going to look at.
What, what would the benefit to the city be of changing it?
The benefit to the city would be reducing the carrying construction costs for builders when they build. So right now, you've got a 20-lot subdivision, right? So you've got a construction loan, right? You've got a, I think we've got 20% on top for the surety on all the construction work. And then now you're rolling, you know, now you're coming in for home construction. So you've got the construction loan on the house and you've got to usually roll the SDCs into that construction loan. So it increases the lending costs associated with the house.
Okay.
That's the, it's not really a benefit to the city. It's, it's, it's trying to kind of reduce those.
Friendly for the.
Correct. Yeah, it reduces the upfront cost. Advocate for infrastructure funding at the regional, state and federal level that would support the construction of new housing and the implementation of state mandates. We are continuing to work with Metro on compare, preparing the McLaughlin Boulevard project, continuing to work with the state on the Henrissey Reservoir Number Two, and the IGAs needed to get that project moving forward. And then in this one, we did include some of the funding that we've obtained. There's some, some pretty, you know, some pretty significant amounts of money that Dana and her team have been able to, to acquire, to win essentially through grants at both the state and federal level. And then we've also included some of the funding that's pending around signal improvements, Malala Avenue and Pearl Safety improvements, some additional water transmission lines. So I think this will be, this goes back to, I think, the lobbying one that we talked about earlier, how we can better represent our projects and maybe try to identify some additional funding sources at the state and federal level. Identify opportunities to use public land in partnership with nonprofits for the development of long-term workforce housing. Once again, this is, you know, when you think about the number of properties that either the city, the Urban Renewal Agency owns that are potentially developed, there's really not that many. You know, you think about, obviously Stimson's on the street, but that's not for housing. You have the Cove property, you have 12th and Main, you have 10th and Main, you have Center Street, you have the two parking lots across from Center Street and the two houses that we own. You know, so there are some opportunities depending on what the commission decides they'd like to see on some of those properties. I think we've, I talked with Mike a little bit about maybe coming back with Urban Renewal now that we have Stimson RFP out, Northeast Gateway Project out on the street, you know, come back and have a discussion, you know, should, what should be the next property that we kind of look at and what do we want to see from that? So kind of go through that same iterative process of, let's say it's 12th and Main, you know, what are some of the values, goals, objectives we'd like to see on that property? And then, and then potentially, you know, talk about maybe another RFP for that property, or 10th and Main, or both of them. I mean, so that's just something we've talked about is, you know, how do we keep this moving forward and kind of really have discussions about what do we want to see, you know, in his, in his workforce housing incorporated in any of those properties? And that'll be a discussion for the commission and the Urban Renewal Commission members to provide us direction. Adopt a five-year Parks Capital Improvement Plan that prioritizes projects and will guide budget investments, revenue options and grant opportunities for potential funding for deferred maintenance throughout the parks and rec system. So Scott and his team have prepared a draft CIP that outlines specific projects that are currently funded, could be funded or are unfunded, specific projects with tie to commission goals, SDC project lists and time-limited funding sources like Metro local share. Identify possible funding sources that may be used to supplement funded projects or cover unfunded ones. Discuss draft CIP with Prac to gain input on project lists and development engagement plan for community buy-in. So that's kind of the steps that we're looking to in kind of creating that, that Parks Capital Improvement Plan.
So this is kind of prioritizing the items that we saw on the.
Correct.
Big wish list.
Right. Yep, yep. So it's kind of taking that whole CIP list and kind of identifying what can, what do we think we can accomplish, you know, in five-year increments. Strive to become recognized as B-City USA and increase high-quality habitat for pollinators. So we're working on compiling information about what it means, what kind of commitments are we making in order to be B-City USA? And then really just working with other departments about what that might look like to implement, looking at what the funding and potential sources of funding would be to, to accomplish that. And then review the project planning commitments with applicable public input from advisory committees and city commission. And then we'll, we'll move that one forward should direction be to do so. Maintain our Tree City USA designation. Community Development's done a great job with this of keeping this program going. Really, right now, it's about, you know, the documentation, putting it into the program with Friends of Trees, and then just making sure we meet the submittal deadlines with, with the state to do that. We've already submitted our annual Tree City USA application. And so, yeah, I think this one is, this one's, we've been successful at for years and years and years. So I don't anticipate any problems with this one moving forward.
I think, are we trying at all to exceed some of their requirements?
I think we do exceed them.
I know we do. But I mean, we had talked about, NRC had talked about reaching out to the neighborhood associations to do a tree inventory. And I haven't seen anything move forward on that.
So identify and apply for grant funding to complete a tree canopy assessment and determine the need and cost. So planning staff's been working to compile the information on potential grants and other funding sources for the assessment. We did, thought we had an opportunity with DLCD. We went to a pre-op with them and were informed that what we were proposing didn't qualify for their grant funding that they had available. So really, it's now trying to identify other funding sources that could potentially help with that assessment moving forward.
Forest Street.
Identify funding and grants to begin designing construction replacements of the boat ramp and park improvements at Clackamas Park. So I talked about this one a little bit earlier when I was talking about EOT and, and the pool.
I'm still a little bit confused about what we decided because I'm remembering that we did not support redoing the boat ramp. And I'm just wondering if my brain just went there because that's what I thought.
I think it was left as, we need to do the work and then we're going to, we're going to have another discussion about that boat ramp. You know, we have this push and pull between the need for the boat ramp, the want for it, the state asking us to put it in, and the impacts on the park, you know, and where, where it would need to be located to be functional on the Clackamas River. I don't know, Scott, is there anything else I'm missing on this one? Or, no? Yeah.
That we were talking about relocating it because it's being undermined where.
Correct. Yeah. I mean, the recommendations from some of the initial studies were that essentially the boat ramp moved closer to the Willamette.
And there are some problems with that.
Oh, it's just, you know, you're taking up a lot of existing green park space in order to get the trailers in and out of there and be able to move them safely with backing movements and whatnot. So.
The approved master plan that we have has it in there.
It does. As well as the relocation of the RV park. So I realize commissions change and decisions change, but we're, we're moving forward with what we have now.
Okay, that's fine.
And those decisions will be up to, up to the commission as to, as to what the final is. is.
But final decisions on the boat ramp relocation will ultimately come back.
Yeah, and we're going to have to, I mean, if the decision is not to, I imagine we're in the same discussion with the state.
Like we were.
Like we were before. The state's saying we need a boat ramp there. If you don't want to, you know, the boat ramp, there's probably a repayment on the existing one. So I think those are just discussions that we would have to have again as to what we would like to do.
Did we ever get a definitive answer on yes, you have to repay it or no?
I don't think we have one.
I think that would be very good to know.
As in paying the state if we were to shut down the boat ramp completely?
Right, yeah, because they, you know, there's a, what is it called, depreciation on the asset? So because it was built a combination of state marine board licensing fees as well as federal money within the agreement, much like Johnstone Park, there's a depreciation value and a payback if it's discontinued. Hard to argue that it's usable right now, but that's part of the discussion.
Isn't some of the restroom facility there part of that deal?
Yeah, some of it was part of some of that funding. That's it.
Good report and thank you.
That's all you all came up with.
Thank you, staff, too. There's a lot of work went into this. Thank you.
Yeah, I see how you all piped up with your items because you were getting the stare down from the manager.
Thought there'd be more questions.
Well, I was waiting to hear from them, you know. So I'm saving all my questions.
All right, so we're good with this one?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, staff.
Let's take a break for five minutes while the staff exits, and then we'll get right back in this, and then we're going to be done. Have some fun.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Rocky, I can always count on you. Thank you.
Well, yeah.
All right, are you ready? We're back. Next on our agenda is a discussion regarding the Oregon City Seal and Flag. Take it away.
Really, not a whole lot of introduction here. What you've seen in your packet is a couple different variations based off of the feedback we received at the last work session. There was a request to see a version based off of elements within the city logo, and then there's another version. There is a request to kind of fix the orientation of the waterfall, basically kind of recreated that one from scratch, trying to create something that is a little more reminiscent of the waterfall's perspective from that location. And then when it comes to the flag, that design is just based off of some of the conversation and an idea I had that is just something to get the discussion going, basically. And then there is, and I should note, there's a couple variations of each one. There is some desire to see Corporation of Oregon City, and then there's also the request to see City of Oregon City. So there's those variants of both of the versions.
I think they all look interesting. My one suggestion would be to make the 1844 just about a quarter, a point larger, just a little bit. I did have some city, one guy at the City of Oregon City saying, trying to argue with me about Astoria, and I said, "Don't even go there."
Oh, boy.
I said, "That's a moot point." I looked it up and showed him the incorporation date. I said-
I think he commented on our Facebook post once, too, about that.
Yes, this was a guy from Astoria. I said, "If you don't know when your own city was incorporated," I said, "We're in trouble now." Any thoughts? I'm going to start with Scott since he's been away.
Oh, wow. So have I.
Rocky, would you like to go first?
Rocky, you have-
No, go ahead. You should all get it out before I go.
Rocky, you have been in my heart the whole time. You've been here, so, you know, what can I say? Scott's been out of the, out of the state.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I did go out of state. That's true.
That's right.
It's out of country as well.
Yeah, and country, yeah.
Well, if we're, if we're talking about the seal specifically-
Yeah, let's start with the seal.
Let's start with the seal. The flag is a later discussion.
My, my preference, I like the idea of kind of like unifying more the city branding and the seal. So the seal using logo elements one and two file name, so not that one. Yeah, my prefer, my personal preference would be those.
All righty. You want to go last?
Whenever.
I agree. I think it makes sense to use, continue to reuse the logo elements. And whether it's city, Corporation of Oregon City just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, me neither.
It did back when they did it. I don't know why, but that's what's on our original seal. But I, again, I don't know why. Maybe it has something to do-
Unless there's some legal requirement.
No. I think it has something to do with when the state came into being versus the city being there. I think that's the only thing I could figure out when I was looking, looking stuff up.
So for me, the top one right there with the logo elements and using the word city would be my favorite for the seal.
So this one?
Yeah, looks a lot like that one.
So I prefer the scratch city seal attempt for a corporation one. I, I don't think that we ought to use the logo in the seal because why would we have a seal if we can just use the logo? If you look at the city seals and the logos across the state, they are never the same because they serve two different functions. So I don't want to have, have the logo be the seal because we wouldn't need a seal. And then as far as preferring corporation, I think I just appreciate the fact that it honors the original logo and the fact that-
The seal.
Or the original seal there, I'm sorry. And the fact that they have historically been referred to as municipal corporations is why I would prefer that one.
So just real quick, a municipal corporation is a local government entity such as a city, town, or county that has granted a charter by a state to administer our local affairs. In our charter, section two, name of city, the municipality of Oregon City, Clackamas County, Oregon, shall be a municipal corporation with the name Oregon City.
I knew there was some history to it besides our charter. It has to do with the, we ceded a lot of our authority when Oregon Incorporated because we were already here. We were basically it.
Yeah. So I think that appreciates the history that we were here before all of those terms were used.
Yep.
If I could just also point out just to your point about the logo, just as one point that could be made, that might not always be our logo.
It's true.
And lord knows I am not bringing up the possibility of a rebrand anytime soon.
Oh, please.
But that said, should the city go through that process again at some point in the future, does that mean we're going to go through the seal discussion again as well?
I don't want to do that. I would say my only comment about it is I prefer this one. What I'm trying in my head is-
Which one did you, oh, I didn't see which one. Hold up. Okay.
My only dilemma about it is knowing the piece of equipment that we use to make the I want to make sure that it is, I don't know, so ours is not in color, which is-
Yeah, the original one was not in color.
Right, and so when it gets embossed, and I looked at it just this morning because it's, I have one of the old seals on my fireplace, I was looking at it, and so you can clearly see the river, you can clearly, I mean, it's, it's the lines when it made the embossment. So, you know, keeping it fairly simple, I think we've got simple lines on here that can, when it, you do that. Now, West Lynn's, I think theirs is kind of like a sticker. Are we, I don't think I want a sticker.
Yeah, the current one that West Lynn is using is a colored sticker.
Yep.
But what we do anyway is it's embossed. That's not the paper that's been embossed, the sticker's been there.
Well, the paper, it's a, it's a specific seal, and that's what gets it embossed.
But it's never, it's never the paper itself embossed, it's just the sticker and-
It sticks on the back, right? Yep.
When I, when I do the seals, I usually put the sticker on before I press it, so it is embossed into the paper as well. So you can tell it's real. I think it was the original reason for that.
Oh, wait.
I'll also just add about the logo one. You can tell that the graphics from the logo were clearly intended to be on a rectangular format, and all of the elements are obscured by the circle of the seal, except for the bridge in the middle. Of course, that can be altered, but, I mean, that's another reason why it just is not ideal.
Yep, I also thought about that as well because, you know.
I didn't even watch the last meeting. I wanted, I thought about it, but then I was like, I'm not, I'm just not even going to.
You have a fresh perspective.
And as someone who has a graphic design major and does a lot of this stuff a lot, I could make the argument for every one of the ones that you all like. Both ways. So this is, this is very hard. I guess the things that stick out to me the most is, yes, that the seal and the logo don't necessarily have to be the same. I think there's some pluses to having a consistency in some way, but again, if the, if the website's redone, if the, you know, logo's redone, it's sometimes then you're revisiting everything. And I do appreciate the historic significance of the word corporation, but sometimes no one gets it. And if no one gets it, it's more confusing than it is important to the history. And that's something I really, because I get it's tied to the origin, we confuse- And that's something I really, because I get it's tied to the origin, we confuse people so much. And so every time I think about the images that we use in this town, and how many times we've used the image in this town, and how a fair amount of the citizens don't know the difference between historic Oregon City, and that that is not the City of Oregon City, and that the City of Oregon City is different than Doca, the Chamber, and all the other organizations that all have pretty much the same logo and have revised them every five years.
Doca's not...
And it's constant. It's constant. And so it's super confusing. I like, I like the City of Oregon City. I mean, if it was Corporation of Oregon City, we'd have that up there.
Right.
Right. So, I mean, I get the historic significance of, but I think most people reading that would be, "What the heck's that mean? It's now turned into a business? I thought this was the city." So I think the simplification of City of Oregon City and the date, we don't think we have to put Incorporated, we know what that date means. The thing about... I don't know that if we look at that logo, like the one right here in color, if we look at that, that it's gonna look anything like that when it's stamped on a piece of paper, on a gold seal.
They will be, the lines will be there, the shapes, those shapes will be there.
The lines will be there, it's gonna be pressed into paper. That looks completely different. You know, so we really, I mean, to get even a semi idea, we'd wanna see that in just a black and white image, and that would give us something, but not even fully, but...
Did you just change it to black and white?
The question is, how many cities are just doing an emboss, and how many cities are doing stickers?
I don't care.
Because, well, if you do, if you care about the embossing, then emboss the paper. Don't emboss it on a sticker that looks like just a sticker anyway. I'd rather have a, if it's gonna be a sticker, then it should be a colored sticker. If it's not gonna be a sticker, then, because it's a cheap gold, you know, it's a kind of just, you know, a generic gold, you know, circle, and you press the stamp in it. We can just press the paper too, for that matter. But anyway, off that topic, but, because I think we, it's gonna look far different.
He just did it in black and white.
I'm attempting to get a copy to Jacob's, so I can put it on the screen.
So, if I can, real quick, like jumping in, one of the reasons I liked the other one, kind of to what you were saying, is I was assuming that it was going to be embossed, like that's...
Right.
And I feel like this one has too much, it would make it impossible to be embossed, it would look muddled. So, I mean, if we're not embossing things, then I think that's a different discussion.
We do, I mean, when you, we have an official piece of paper that has, it's city's official stuff, there's a seal on it.
I know, but that seal's embossed onto a gold sticker.
Yeah.
And stuck onto a piece of paper.
Well, he says he puts it on the paper and then embosses it.
But it looks the same.
Yeah. I think that the seal, whether we're embossing something or not, it makes a difference in what the ultimate seal design could and should be. We can have more colors and intricacy and lines if it's a sticker versus an embossment, whether it's embossed on a sticker or not.
Well...
Go ahead.
So, what I had said in the original meeting was that I would prefer just something that's black and white, simply because it can be easily transferred between using it in a digital platform and actually understanding what it might look like as an embossed sticker or whatever you wanna call it.
That's very true, too.
So I would prefer just that the seal itself be black and white. Like, looking at City of Portland, for example, you can find ones that are colored in, but they just mainly use the black and white one, and it works well.
Absolutely.
The embossed one looks really good on the paper that we use for official...
I'm not saying it doesn't, I'm just saying, you know, we're looking at a beautiful colored design, and so it's easy to say, "I like that, because it looks good." It's gonna look far different embossed.
He's gonna send it over, and then we're gonna look at it in black and white.
Okay, this one is a super graphic designing and picky, but... We'll wait till we go back to the logo, or the...
Wait a second.
So I can add to your credentials. So when I graduated from undergrad, I have a minor and a major. I have a minor in art from my college.
Okay, well, we'll see what you think of this.
So we've got three people here that like pick unique art stuff.
I have a problem with the elevator on this.
Yeah.
The elevator takes you to nowhere, to the top of a mountain. That elevator needs to be faced the other way. You don't view out to nothing outside the page. You view from the observation deck to the falls in the mountain. And the, in order to look at the falls, the elevator would have to be the other way. So just draw your eye into the center of that design. The elevator observation deck would be flipped the other way, so that it is coming from...
Rotated about 180, is what you're saying?
Yeah, coming from the round circle facing inward.
Could I add on to that?
Please.
So, in addition to that, because that was one of my notes, I like the idea of it standing outside of the inner circle, but I think just for clarity's sake, I would prefer that it be all within and not obscuring any of the letters. That would be my preference. And then just looking, again, one of the more nitpicky things is just the curvature of the word "City of Oregon City" needs to be centered.
If you flip the elevator, it's gonna give you more space, that that top part of the elevator's gonna go in a little bit, because the...
Right.
That gives you more space when you flip it in, but...
And I mean, these are all things that are easily changed, and, I mean, I appreciate the feedback. Honestly, I taught myself Illustrator, so I could make this.
Oh, cool.
Thank you. So, I appreciate the feedback and the tips on how to do that, and this was not meant to be like a final design by any stretch, but let's go this direction or not. So you would want to rotate the observation deck, basically 180 degrees, and maybe shrink the elevator down a touch, so that it's no longer going outside of the circle.
Overlapping the circle.
I don't know that I'd shrink it, or I'd slide it to the right a little bit.
And cover up...
Or maybe a little both.
Yeah. You may like, I mean, it'd be good to see both, because sometimes breaking that circle on one side is a really good thing.
Yeah.
I just think if you flip that elevator, that piece of the observation deck's a little longer, it's gonna move that, the main shaft of the elevator over anyway.
Yeah.
And...
I don't...
I think you'll get some space there, but yeah, you wanna see a little bit more of that Y, I think.
I'm with you with it covering up a little bit normally, but I don't know about when it's embossed, what's that gonna look like?
Well, yeah, that's why we gotta see it that way, I don't know.
I don't know that you're gonna be able to imagine what's behind it.
Right.
And honestly, I mean, I was struggling with the shape of the elevator myself, I wasn't super fan. I almost wondered, instead of turning 180, if we just almost turn it 90 and have it basically just facing almost forward, and not having any like flat side, but basically just kind of having it rounded on either side there.
Having it go the other way brings your eye in, and it also allows the illusion that the observation deck goes off to something. Where it's facing straight at you, it's a space needle. I mean, it's a elevator to nowhere, kind of. I mean, you're creating the illusion that it's attached to something by basing it onto that.
Well, when you're looking at it from 7th Street, and you're looking at it straight on...
Denise, I know, that's not the point.
Okay, what, tell me what the point is then?
The point is, you're basing that observation deck to something.
Okay, I get that.
It's making it stationary.
I understand.
I know that I can walk around all sides of the elevator and get a different view of it, but that's not, that doesn't help this design.
You know, this is gonna create a view that you can't get from anywhere, but there's three iconic elements in our town: the falls, the elevator, and the bridge. And we don't have the bridge. I would love to see the bridge on there. And how you do that?
So you're saying...
There's no way you're gonna do that and get everything facing the correct direction.
Instead of, would you take the mountain out?
Maybe? Or maybe the trees go away, so it's not quite so busy? And if you could get the bridge in there somewhere, the big empty, it's like, "What's Oregon City?" Well, there's nothing there. It's just, there's...
Now, remember, this is gonna be...
I know, I realize that. I realize that. I would just like to see what would happen with the bridge in there somehow. But honestly, I don't care a whole lot about the seal, because how many people ever even see it? I know the one we have is horrible, so, you know, let's move on.
And that's the reason why it doesn't need to be the logo.
What?
And that's the reason why it doesn't need to be the logo.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we're not, I mean, I think we moved past that discussion.
So, after we want to have him work on this one? Some more, refine this some more? Okay, you guys consensus?
Can we put a bridge above the falls, or does it have to be below the falls?
Oh, stop!
We got a lot of stuff below the falls, I need something on the top of the falls.
I don't have a problem...
Without having to completely redesign the falls.
I don't have a problem if you remove Mount Hood, because, you know, I mean, there's only a few places you can really actually even see the darn thing.
No, if it's intentional, not if it's just the design, but the top of the shaft of the elevator is the exact same width as the lower piece, so it doesn't get smaller.
It is, the top is smaller.
And the logo is...
Right, in the logo.
The logo it is.
In not in real life, it is not.
In real life.
All right.
So let's change the logo.
Let's change, let's just change the elevation.
The logo is abstract on purpose.
I'm kidding.
The logo is in a consistent style.
Okay.
This is what it was.
Yeah. So it's very black and white and very...
That's not a really good copy of it. When it's embossed, it looks better. And I'm glad I have it, because I like, I mean, I saw, so, "Oh, that's cool." I don't like that.
All right, let's see what we can do.
All right.
Are we going to the flag, or are we moving on?
Do we want to, I guess, part of what we've got here on the flag is that I totally agree with the statement that, you know, simplicity is the key. And I know that our state flag has been criticized, but, you know, be that it may, I like the beaver on one side and something else on the other side, but anyway. So, let's talk about the flag.
Can I start on this one?
Please.
So, I disagree with the idea of having a seal on the flag.
I totally agree with that.
And I feel very vindicated by this book, because everything that I said are these five rules right here.
Well, Elaine Woolsey did not look at this.
So, I appreciate the idea of the example that's on the screen right there, however, that is basically the Arizona flag.
Yep.
So...
What does the Arizona flag look like?
Imagine that... It's different. Being an Arizona native, it is different.
Yeah.
The stars center, and the colors are different. But in this case, we went, I went with, A, trying to somewhat match the logo aesthetically, inspirationally, or whatever, and then instead of like however many stars represent all the things in the seal, like the current thing, I went with like, I went with one star for being the first city.
And I appreciate all the symbolism.
It's on the back page, behind Arizona.
Yeah.
Arizona's right below the flag of Japan.
But, and I'm gonna go back to, and I know that the consensus at our previous work session was try and incorporate elements of the logo, but again, I'm gonna...
I don't know.
Get on my soapbox and say that this isn't part of our logo branding, that's why we have a flag. And again, using City of Portland, one of the very few times I will use them as an example of something that I respect, is looking at the difference between their city seal and their flag. They're not the same at all, but they both communicate things about the city that they're trying to...
To me, that communicates nothing.
So, but...
And that's the problem I have, that's the problem I have with the star.
Well, it's the two rivers, Portland and the confluence. That's what I recall.
Yeah, that's, yes, the...
Oh, this looks like, this looks like an intersection.
It is.
It is.
It is the intersection of the city.
I don't care what Portland does, I just, the reason that I'm in favor of using the logo is the ones that don't have a logo have hundreds of years of history around some design element, like here, Canadian maple leaf, yeah. That's, maple leaf has been Canada forever, or if it's particular colors in a country that have a definite meaning. But what does that say that it's Oregon City?
So, I will say, I didn't realize to your comment that there was consensus on trying to use parts of the city seal.
No, there wasn't.
Okay.
No, but I would not... There was, there was direction to him to come back with something that...
I think using parts of the city seal or parts of the city logo on the flag are a mistake. And I also will agree with you that this doesn't, a noble effort, it doesn't really communicate or represent Oregon City, and that's what a flag should do. It should in some way represent the city. And not all cities have flags or elements that are hundreds of years old. Salem just redid their flag, and it's not based in 100-year-old history.
But isn't Salem's motto Cherry City?
Yes, but then you've got Milwaukee, they consider themselves Cherry City.
And they put a cherry, they put a cherry blossom on the flag. So there's a tie-in.
And our flag should have something similar, there should be a representation of...
Jared has put before us as a starting point.
Right, sure, I get it.
So, an example where it's not direct, right, is if you look at the city flag for Chicago, which has three stars on it, four stars on it, five stars, thank you, oh, yeah, thank you. So each of the stars represents a major event in the history of Chicago, correct?
Yeah.
That's true, I don't know the history of the flag.
I believe that's it. So I know one of them is like the World's Fair, there are a few other things, but there's symbolism behind it.
Right. And that's what I'm really struggling with, is...
I don't, that's something I just saw from Salem.
That's not their flag.
Not Salem's. Salem's flag is pink and blue and white.
Well, I saw one that was pink with a cherry blossom in it. We're talking about that?
That is their flag.
That's the one they just did.
That is their award-winning flag, because it's a great one.
Well, never mind, it's not my city.
So it was four, sorry. The Chicago flag, two blue stripes represent Lake Michigan and the Chicago River branches, while the three white bands symbolize the city's northwest and south sides, and the widest middle blend representing the west side's largest area. The four reds, six pointing sides honor significant events: Fort Dearborn, the Great Chicago Fire, the '93 World Exposition, and the '33 Century of Progress Exposition.
Why don't we just have this shape of the state of Oregon with a Herken star in the middle of it, and that's us?
That sounds awful.
I'm just saying, we are the first city, how do we capitalize on...
So that's where...
Big number one.
Oh, I like it, we're number one, we have the phone finger.
Very sports-like, but...
That phone finger.
That's what I was just saying, we could just get phone fingers.
Here's what it shouldn't be. It shouldn't be a handful of people sitting at a table deciding in one or two meetings. It shouldn't be the mayor deciding what she likes or anyone else. It should be a broader thing than that, and I don't know if that means we do an open invitation to people in this community, because people are gonna come up with stuff, and they're gonna have, they're gonna have the symbols, and they're gonna rationalize it, and then we can have that discussion of this represents us, this doesn't. But I don't know how we do that, I mean, how involved do we want that to be?
I don't.
I fully agree. I think that this should be more of an open submission for the city flag. Like, this doesn't have to be this heavy onerous, "Oh, my gosh, we have to pick a new flag." Like, this can be fun and uplifting and involve the community, and I think it should.
We had a lot of fun naming a street sweeper, you know? Let's go down...
You have to be careful.
We should give them some...
Well, yeah, I'm not saying we're gonna end up with voting the votes.
Flaggerston or something.
So, within, you know...
There'll be good, there'll be good submissions.
Within the parameters, right? We can say, you know, C guidelines here, you know, as well.
Well, we can put these out, limit the number of colors. No lettering or seals. Be distinctive or related.
So, as an example, there was an OPB article like literally two days ago about the process that the city of Vancouver, Washington is going through, and what I appreciated... And what I appreciated about that is that out of the, I think, 138 designs they had, they whittled it down and then they actually incorporated versions that they liked into various versions. And that could be a process that we can follow.
Sure.
And, and making it an open process. I, I have my own ideas and I've sketched out and I know Commissioner Smith does too. And so making this an open process is something that I would be open to. And then if we get to the point where there are certain things we like about each one, we can combine them into things that make it better as a whole.
Yep.
There was something in here about, and I said laugh when I saw it because it talked about, do not make this a free for all. That's what I was saying in the booklet.
Probably old white guys.
We don't know that.
So are we, are we too coming up with some type of a process?
That, that would be my request is figuring out how could we feasibly take this to the public to come up with a process of flag submissions that then the commission kind of whittles down.
And I think you could have a process that's not a free for all.
Thank you.
Agreed.
I do agree. I mean, is the, is the book guidance enough?
Yes, the five design principles should be part of the, the, the offering. Because when I first got on city commission, I had a young man submit to me a whole bunch of, I mean, you know, he's like in elementary school. And I said, well, this is going to be on hold. We are not, we're not talking about that. We had, we were just coming, doing our first goal setting session. It was COVID, everything else was going on. I said, the flag right now is not, not a high priority.
But I mean, maybe an elementary school kid comes up with a concept. It's a great idea and just needs help like.
Okay, do we have a consensus that we're going to use these five principles as part of the design thing?
Yes.
As suggestions, sure.
Because this is.
Maybe we get the arts commission involved.
Well, we'll ask them their opinion.
But I think what's interesting is maybe as part of this, and Jared and I'll talk a little bit, and maybe there's a submission with a one paragraph narrative. Like, like that explanation of the Chicago flag.
Yeah.
Right.
And on the back here.
On the back of the.
Maybe if we wrote a narrative about what Jared, because like to me it was, you know, what, what we had kind of heard was incorporate the logo colors, the one star waters waves, right? So.
Yeah, and for the City of Vancouver website, landing page on their website for this process, the finalists all have their little one paragraph narrative that explain. Because like, for example, again, to what Commissioner Mitchell said, when you look at the City of Portland flag, it, I mean, it takes some explaining to understand, but when, when you do, I think.
It makes sense.
It makes a lot of sense. So.
We'll have the flag explanation.
He hasn't read the back.
No, I didn't read the back one.
It tells you.
I can hardly wait.
Oh, that's interesting. So they're going for a new design. Looking at the old design. If you look at that, those wavy blue lines too long, it might give you a little bit of a headache there.
I guess I would just say like, I don't know if there's, I don't know if this starts to get out of the expertise of our current staff. You know, it's one thing to do the, the design. It might, we might need to hire some help as we refine this into something that's actually the final product. Not sure how much we can do in-house.
No, we're, we, we need, we're going to need help. We're going to need help, we know that. Jared has, has done a mighty job and thank you. He gives us some ideas.
I mean, if, if, if we, if, if we basically put this out to the residents and look for some designs and then we, you know, kind of come up with some elements from all these designs that we can put together, then give to a designer and say, make it, you know, I, I think that's pretty feasible.
Except for the next trail news doesn't come out till.
Actually, the deadline was yesterday for the content.
Oh, it was.
So we're not going to do it on this one then for a while.
That's when April's comes. No, I'm just kidding, not that far out.
You could slide it in.
No, it won't be.
I know it was interned. I might.
We're going to probably come back with some parameters. We'll think in.
Trail news, we'll just put it out.
I would imagine we're going to write some, some, you know, a beginning explaining what we're asking. Incorporate some, some kind of sideboards. Narrative, drawing, city commission's inviting you to submit, that type of thing. I mean, I, I think, do you guys want to see that or you just want us to put this together and run with it? I, I feel like I should bring it back. I mean, this is.
Yeah, I mean, just.
I'd like to see.
Run with it and let's just take a look at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is, is there a.
I kind of like that.
A, a goal for timeline or whatever? I just wondered because at the same time, the logo contest for the, for the pool's birthday party thing, the kind of running at the same time might bottle things.
I'm, I'm personally, I'm not in a, this is something I want to do, I'm passionate about, but I would rather do it the right way. I don't want to rush anything.
And the logo, the pool logo one's going to be a real quick process because the party's in January, right? So by the time you get that put together, you know, it's almost, that one's almost going to be dead by the time this one rolls out, I think. The good news is, I mean, there is no real press. We have a wonderful flag right now. We can just continue using, right?
We could actually fly? I don't know if it's ever actually flown.
I think it got.
Perhaps, perhaps not.
Elaine had it printed and then the city manager at the time took it down because it was not good.
Fly straight to the metro.
Offensive to everyone.
It was equally offensive.
Yes, thank you. Yes, and, and particularly our Native American folks. It was just like, what is that?